Well, first off, I want to thank everybody tonight for spending this time with us for this retreat. We have a lot of stuff to go over. It's nice that you made time in your busy schedules, and I know this is hard sometimes to do, but it's good to see all of you here. So without further ado, I'm not going to spend a lot of time on myself. I think we're going to go right into infrastructure discussion. So I will let, would it be you Denise, or who is going to start?
Yeah, I'll, I'll start. So I don't know if everyone's met, but Don DeRosa is our new Public Works Director. He took over Tom's position when Tom retired. And Chris Lewis is our new Plant Operations Manager. He took over when Dave retired. And we have Kurt MacLeod on the line, who is our City Engineer. And I think we will start with him going over the memo that I sent to you guys on Friday night or Saturday regarding the capacity and what's going on and what we're looking at in the wastewater treatment plant and the water plant. So Kurt, go ahead.
Hi, everybody.
How are you Kurt?
How's it going?
Good. That Pontiac would be a fun toy for a 65-year-old, too. So yeah, I wrote a memo that just gave a quick overview of the water and wastewater. And I know Chris has got more detail that we'll talk about after this. But just talking about wastewater first, we've come back to the council a few times in the last decade, concerned with capacity, making sure we knew where we were headed. In the past couple of years, they've made some good progress with INI, apparently, because the per capita flows are down. So we've gone from over 100 to down to about 82 gallons per capita per day, which is super good, because all that means is you've gained more capacity at the treatment plant. So right now, I think we're, I say conservatively, at 70%. It's probably closer to 60%, but you have quite a bit of capacity at the wastewater treatment plant. So there's no pressing capital improvement plan at the wastewater plant, except that we know with all the growth that's happening, that in the next few years, we're going to be pushing capacity. Now DEQ wants to make sure you're looking five years ahead. They want, when you're at 85%, they want to see that you have a facility plan or put together to talk about your future. So we've started that. In the next two months, we'll be done with that process. That process, we know right now that it's going to identify that you need to continue making those INI improvements, which you're doing good. We still have ways to go. We know we're going to recommend moving the plant. So we don't want the plant to be in the location that it is, because it has very limited space. We don't have enough room to grow there. And it's also in a location that you know how it flooded a few years ago, but it's in a low elevation. So it's also close to town. It's adjacent to the city shops, which is just prime riverfront property. So what we're proposing, been talking with the city about is moving both the shops and the wastewater plant out into the industrial park. So that will come out as a recommendation in the facility plan. And then in the facility plan, we'll, we'll put together cost estimates for all the improvements that would have to be made. We will have to put a pump station where the plant is now. And then we would see what we have to do with Timber Park, whether we use Timber Park in, in series with the wastewater treatment plant or whether we reconfigure the pump stations. The Park Campus Pump Station will get picked up and moved. So it is, I think, the least improved pump station of your pump stations. So it doesn't hurt that we're going to abandon that and move it. But because the urban growth boundary was extended, as I mentioned in my memo, they now, you now have some service area that can't be served by the Park Campus Pump Station. So we'll move that to the far north end of the UGB, and then we'll pump it to wherever the plant ends up. Now, Bill Highland, as you all are aware, has been talking with the city quite a bit for the last year. He bought some property in the industrial park. He's anxious to make a deal with the city, and I think it can be a very good deal for the city that we pick up 10 acres. Denise, I don't know how many acres we have at the existing plant and the city shops. What's that total? But at any rate, it's very confined. The city shops are quite large, but the wastewater tram is very small. But if we had 10 acres down, it'd be off of Farmstead Road, and it would be on the, on the west side of the end of Park Avenue. So it's a 27-acre site. We would get the westerly 10 acres of that site. It would give us good access to Farmstead Road. Ultimately, it might have access if the remainder of that 27 acres develops. I would expect there would be access directly to River Mill. So, but for now, access to Farmstead would work well for the city. So that's the future of the wastewater is that we'll get the facility plan done. We'll talk about what needs to be done for the pump stations, the collection system, and then we'll lay out a plant for you. We're, we are anxious to get a membrane plant in there, because the Clackamas River is really a critical river to keep the water quality as high as possible. So the only shortcoming with a membrane plant is we want to make sure that our peak day flows don't overwhelm the membranes. The, the way the membranes work is it always produces absolutely the highest quality of water. But if you overwhelm it, it can't, it has a limited peak capacity. Whereas the kind of plant we have now doesn't always produce the best water quality, but it doesn't have an absolute limit. So you could put as much water as you want to it. It just has less water quality coming out. When we go to a membrane, we want to be careful that we size it for those peak days, because once you hit the wall at the, at the top end, then you're, you're cooked. You need to store for a little while, or you need to just have some provisions for backup. So wastewater is pretty straightforward. You're in good position now. I think I mentioned the biggest issue we have with wastewater is, and we've always had this issue, is sludge storage. And so the more flow that we're getting, the hydraulic flows are dropping, the water is dropping, but the organic content continues to increase, is what you would expect. So when you bring new homes on, the organic load is going to increase. The water uses, is more, there's more conservation playing a role with the water use. So what we do, though, is we produce a lot of sludge, and the sludge has been very limited storage availability at the plant. So we can't always dispose of sludge. We need to have good weather to dispose of sludge. We have to have adequate fields to dispose of sludge. But we, what we really need is just one large storage tank. We need to be able to store sludge for six months is usually the target. You store for six months. So we have, Chris, what do we have? I think we have about 240 total thousand gallons, I think. Do we, in sludge storage, a 150 and a 90, or are they smaller than that? I don't recall.
Smaller than that, we have 140,000 gallons.
Total? Okay. We have 140,000 gallons total. We really should have maybe 400,000 gallons total, so that we can carry us through the periods when we can't dispose of sludge. And the problem we have with that existing plant site is there's no room to put it. So it's just too small a site. So you'll see more about the facility plan. The draft facility plan will be published in the spring. It then goes to DEQ. Usually takes maybe three or four, maybe even five months to get response back from DEQ. And then following that, it will take a year or so to develop a funding program, work with USDA, work with IFA, Infrastructure Finance Authority at the state of Oregon. And they'll come up with a package for you. And I would fully expect there'll be some grant funding or forgivable loan involved with that. So, and it's too early to talk about costs, but everything's expensive these days. So it's going to be expensive.
Yeah.
So real quick, I just want to add that. So we'll be having an executive session to talk about the property coming up at one of your meetings shortly, so to look at that. Because if we can at least get the property, then it just puts us ahead of the game. So we'll be discussing that at a later date. And Chris, did you want to add anything about what Kurt said about the wastewater treatment plant before we?
No, he said everything I was going to say, so.
Okay.
Well, one other thing about the property, is that the only piece of property we're looking at? Or we have another option?
We looked at a couple other pieces, but the cost of those are prohibitive.
Can I ask a question?
Go ahead, Joe.
I'm sorry. So one of the properties, when I was doing the tour with Chris here, was we looked at the, I think it was the rock quarry pit or something like that. And I hear that the, that's, there's an interest in that also from our engineer Kurt as well. So can, can you talk to me a little about that, Kurt? And if that's why that's, you're looking at that one? And can we look and see, Denise, maybe if we can find out if that's somewhere we can, even a consideration we can put with them? Can we contact them or something?
We've looked at that, and I do think that's very, it's got some good benefits for the city, because we could lower the whole plant. We probably dropped the plant down 50 feet of elevation and get gravity flow into the plant. So the challenges are, it's outside the urban growth boundary. So we'd be working with Clackamas County, which is a real challenge in that zone. That's one of the things we anticipate. Even if we build in the industrial park, we're going to have a challenge to get our effluent pipeline across that Clackamas County zoned property into the river. So, but if we could get down in the rock quarry, that is the best of all worlds, because we could drop that plant down over the hill. You wouldn't hardly even see it. It's got huge stormwater detention ponds down there. We would, I would expect discharge right into a pond and let that go to the river. No, I do think that's well worth looking into. And we haven't, we haven't pushed to one direction on the relocation, but Bill Highland is the one that's aggressive in providing this site. And his site would be a great site. He's offering it, I think, for well below what the rest of the land is selling for in that industrial park. But I think that whoever at the city knows the quarry operator, we should meet with them and talk with them. I don't know if they're running out of rock, whether they have long-term use for that property, or if they're maybe anxious to sell a piece to the city.
Yeah, definitely something to look at, I think. And that's because the, just because the property is a good price now for, for Bill Highland. It doesn't mean it's the right one that we should be taking. We need to look further beyond just what the cost is right now and see what's going to be the most beneficial to us in the long term. And as you said, it's 50 feet lower. It's got direct feeds in there. Yeah, we have to deal with, with the, with the county. But I mean, how far outside of our urban growth boundary is that rock quarry? And would that be something that we might have in our urban growth boundary by the time we're ready to build? So.
Could be. It abuts the urban growth boundary on your west side. So we could, we could, and that may be the easiest way to get Clackamas County approval is to expand your urban growth boundary to take in additional industrial land or a zone that's designed for public utilities. So we'll make a point to talk with the county to find out what would be involved. And I would much rather put it in the rock quarry site, just because we could eliminate the campus pump station, and we could have things drained by gravity into the plant.
And that sounds good, especially for like backup power issues potentially, and things like that.
Right.
Some of the things that we're also, I'm going to ask, I have a whole lot of questions. I hope you don't mind, because this is one of my key focuses for the, for the time on the, on the council here. So one of the things that we're looking at, too, is would consideration for like, like solar panels and things on top of the pumps and things to kind of reduce that and get some sort of green energy type? Is that something you'd put in your design?
Actually, our electrical demands are pretty strong. It'd be very difficult to get enough solar to really assist. When you get to a larger plants, and you guys are not to the stage of a larger plant, but when you get to a larger plant, you know, of course, we create methane if we go to anaerobic digestion of the sludge. But that's an expensive process to initiate. You could then recover that gas and use it for onsite energy. But I don't see solar. You know, by the time we do this, I think the solar and alternative power sources are going to be so important in our whole political sense here that we certainly will look at it and do what we can do. You know, maybe enough to feed, to supply the office. I know I just did my own personal home. I had them do an analysis for giving me solar to do the power supply. I buy power from Cambe Utility. It's very inexpensive. I pay seven and a half, about seven and a half cents a kilowatt hour. The, the impact of the solar at this point for my own house needs was I'd have to pay an additional $110 a month for the next 25 years. So that took into account the offset of savings and then to pay for the cost, the capital cost of the solar panels.
It also, but it might also bring in some, some green dollars, though, from different programs throughout, you know, federal and state to help offset some of the cost of that, too. So, so I, I got a lot of questions. The, and if anyone else needs to jump in there, please stop me, because I'm going to, I don't want to take up everybody else's time. So the, with the plant there, you said we're at currently 60 to 70%. What's our normal peak times when we hit that for the, for the flow?
Now, Chris would be better to serve that, but we have, we look at dry weather flow and we look at wet weather flow, two different criteria.
Okay, can fill me on this?
Our average dry weather flow, is that what you want to know?
Both, both dry and wet.
I have, I have those, Chris, from last year. I don't know if you have them handy. Let me just tell you what, our dry weather flow for last year was, was only 322,000 gallons a day. And the plant is designed for 540,000 gallons a day. So, and your average wet weather flows were 650,000 gallons per day. And you're designed for, I believe, 1.5 for peak wet weather flows. And then you're designed for a peak day of 4.5 million gallons. So what we've made progress on, the average dry weather flows, you can see at, at 322,000 gallons, that was 59% of capacity. The wet weather, that 600, was actually 648,000 gallons, was 43% of the wet weather capacity. And the peak day, I didn't summarize the peak day in this last review, but Chris, have you had any days over three and a half MGD?
This last storm, we were up to 4 million gallons for that.
What was it?
It was 4.0.
4.0. So that, that is by far the biggest one we've seen in quite a few years. So that's what we need to address. We need to make sure that those peak wet weather days, the peak storm days don't come back to haunt us when we do membranes. We're making good progress on that.
So I don't know how hard it'd be for you, but in a conversion of what our capacity is, then on dry, it looks like dry is going to be the one that we have to focus on. What, what kind of housing increase you think we can actually do between now and when we might get that plant built, you know, for the next five years? Do you think we could take on a, on a housing increase and industrial increase?
Yeah, we talked about that earlier this year. And I think we were looking at 1,000 units. Denise, do you recall that?
I don't, but I can find that.
I, I have some numbers here. So I think we are looking at about 1,000 new homes is what we could accommodate. I sent a letter to DEQ on your behalf here earlier in 2020, because they asked for that. So let's see. As I recall, you're able to serve a large population. I think, I think even with all the growth we're seeing, we're not, we're not going to be stressed to capacity. One of the things we will do, though, is that we're not going to worry about the 85% of capacity, because we know we're going to move in the plant. So we're making provisions to move the plant, and then we'll make sure DEQ is okay with us pushing the plant as far as we want to push it.
Okay. So now, when you say units, are you talking about?
Houses, households.
Not doors? So like a multi-complex unit or something like that with many doors?
Yes.
Each door counted as a household when you have like an apartment?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. And so it looked like in 2017, a memo we wrote said that the plant had a capacity to serve about 4,700 people. So your population now is about, I think it's about, is your service population 3,800 or so now? Maybe 39?
I think it's over 4,000.
Is it? And this letter was written?
If you go to one end of town, the sign says 4,000 something. You go to the other end, it says 3,000 something. They're both different.
Melanie, do you remember what the last one we got was?
PSU's estimate was just, it was like 4,035 people.
Are they all served by the wastewater system?
That's a good question, because yeah, is everybody on, not on sewer that have just come in? I don't think so.
So here's what, see that memo that we wrote?
Population, or are we talking about doors?
Yes.
Yeah, that's the population, not the doors.
Equivalent dwelling units.
Yeah, yeah.
We use the term. But this was population. This was a letter also that was written two years ago. So it was two years prior to when we saw that per capita loads go down. So we were approaching, we were at 10% higher consumption in 2018 than we are today. So we've really, we've recovered capacity in the last two years.
How did we recover capacity?
By conservation and repairing INI. So in the, in the dry weather flows, conservation is what is our benefit. During the wet weather flows, it's sealing manhole lids and repairing broken pipelines.
So would a, would some sort of program or that maybe the city might run for units to try to do water conservation or be better with the sewers, help reduce something there that might help us stretch a little further? I just, my, my goal is to make sure that we don't have to get to that, you know, kind of reduction in, and how the quality that we put back out from our plant before we get the new one built. So we're not dumping nasty water into our nice river, so.
Well, don't get me wrong. 99% of the time, we're dumping great water out into the river. But it's when we have those peak events, we'll have, you know, how often do we have a four? That's once in the last 10 years we've had a four MGD flow. So when those happen, we're talking about a weekend where the load, actually, the flow coming into the plant is very low strength. So the organics are super low. What we have, when we have those peak day flows, we fight our permit, because we have to get 85% removal. So that means we've got to have a very high-quality effluent, because the flow coming into the plant is already very low concentration. Normally, we'd be up at 200, but in those peak wet weather days, it might come in at 50. And we've got to get down to the seven to meet permit. So we, we're still producing good quality water. Your plant, I think, has worked well since the 80s. You have a trickling filter solace contact, which is a very unique plant. I know at the time you built that, Silverton built the same thing, and theirs failed. So a couple of years later, they had to do a certificate of non-compliance to EPA, and they had to go back in and spend a bunch more money. But yours worked from day one, which we were very happy with. That's exciting.
Knock on wood.
Yeah. And that, but that was 32 years ago. So it's a long time ago.
Just one, one little comment, because I think we haven't really talked about INI for a while, maybe, and that's infiltration and inflow, where water gets into our sewer pipes. I don't know, maybe everybody's familiar with that already. But it's, so it's not just the water from people's homes coming into the sewer pipes. It's the groundwater that seeps in as well. That, that's why we get so much flow when it's really a stormy day and it gets in the manholes, like you were saying. I don't know if anybody had any questions on that. That's what we were talking about.
And you've been working on that. That was an issue 20 years ago. The last facility plan was done in 2020. That was a big issue at that time. And so there's been a program, I don't know how much you put each year into it. It's 50-plus thousand a year into an INI program each year, just to address that, to find places where water is making it into the system. It's a, it's a very difficult battle, because you could fix all of your pipes, but then all of the sewer ladders that go on private property into everyone's homes typically are in just as bad a shape as your lines. And so even if you were to fix all your pipes 100%, you probably still would have 50-plus percent of your infiltration coming from the sewer laterals. And it's, it's a little more difficult to get it onto private property, to get funding, to do private property lateral replacement. But that, someday, we may be there to need to do that. Recognize, too, when we build a new plant, your new plant will have a capacity for 20 years. So it'll look out to 2040 or 2041. So when you first come online, you're going to be at very low use of your capacity. So you can tolerate those higher flow events in the earlier years of your plant. It's just that when we start to get 15 years out, we're going to start to depend on the capacity that's built into that plant design. So, so you need to just tackle INI over the next decade or two.
And will, will that plant be designed with, of course, the idea that we'll need to expand capacity at some point in the 30, 40 years from now?
Certainly.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah. Very easy to do. What we expect and what Bill Highland's been pushing also, he's, he has a million ideas. I don't know if you're exposed to him as much as I am. But he'd like to buy land all the way out to Hypal, and he wants us to push the pump station out into Hypal, way north of your urban growth boundary. And the ground all drops off as you continue north. So it's advantageous to have it out there. It's just that he's, he's thinking 40 years in the future instead of 20 years in the future.
Let me get over this. Is there any more questions for him on the sewer plant? This, this particular item? Anybody got any questions? Okay, go ahead.
So actually, I wanted to shift up to the water side of things now. I'm kind of on the sewer part of it. So can we, can we deal with that, or do we need some?
Yeah, let's let Kurt give his report on the water.
Okay. Let me give you a little overview on the water. The water, the actual, the actual system, you're in good shape. Right now, you have a capacity of just under 2 million gallons a day. Your average has been for the last year, I think it was 700,000 gallons a day. Your peak was around 1.4 million gallons per day. So you, you're not pushing capacity at this point. You also have the ability to expand that plant. Right now, it has a nominal capacity of 2 million gallons a day, and we have water rights for 2.6 million gallons a day. So at some point, we can expand it, pick up that other half, or 0.6 million gallons a day. So we just built one storage reservoir this year. So you're, you're in good shape for storage. If you look at the total volume for your population, your distribution, there's been quite a few distribution system improvements, but they're all made by private developers. And so we're just making sure they build what serves the city's needs. And we, we ask them to oversize them. They get SDC credits when they oversize the pipeline to make sure that we're looking at the long-range plan. So source, treatment, storage, and distribution, you're in, in good capacity shape. Now, we've got three issues that are coming right now that are important that I talked about in my memo a little bit. They did a, a performance evaluation of the water plant last year, and they were concerned about some short-circuiting potential if we opened the wrong valve. And they were concerned about our ability to get adequate disinfection during peak production. So we initially were looking at how do we get more detention time in our clearwells? We have two steel tank clearwells at the water plant. And they, the essence for doing what they want us to do is just to have a longer detention time in those tanks. So right now, what happens, we feed water into the tanks. That water short-circuits to the outlet. So our detention, we only get maybe 10-plus percent of the volume of those tanks. So we initially looked at putting baffles in the tank, which would have provided you much, much more percentage of useful volume, much higher detention, and made it to where you were easily able to meet your, your disinfection requirement. However, it was kind of a Band-Aid approach. And as I looked at the old master plan in, in 2008, I think, was the water master plan, the last water master plan. And it discussed this issue, and it said we should be moving towards ultraviolet disinfection. So what we're proposing now, and I have a scope of work that I need to send up to Denise this week, that's going to talk about adding a UV disinfection at the water plant. So what the UV disinfection does for us, right now, we have disinfection requirements. I know it's confusing. Let me tell you that numerically, we have to hit about a 50 chlorine contact time. Once we put the UV disinfection in, we still will need some chlorine contact time, but it drops down to like a five or a six. And so with the dosage we apply, the chlorine dosage we apply, and the very minimal amount of storage that we would claim for the detention, the effective storage in those tanks, we can easily meet the requirements. So that, that would be forever. So the baffling, we would, it would come back to bite us 10 more years from now when we're still fighting, as the capacity increases. With UV disinfection, you'll solve your problem forever. So the plant is configured nicely. There's a, there's a good location to install the UV. The scope of the cost is a, I believe it's about $300,000 is the total project cost to put the redundant units. There'd be two units each capable of the plant capacity. So you have full redundancy. So that's one thing. And Oregon Health Authority is, is very happy with us to pursue that route. We talked with James Nastrella, who's the person that did your survey and is prompting you to make improvements. So instead of doing a baffle, and I think instead of doing even the isolation, they want us to eliminate the manual bypasses we have around tanks. But instead of eliminating those, we can demonstrate that even with all But instead of eliminating those, we can demonstrate that even with only one tank online with UV disinfection, that we can meet all of the treatment requirements. So that's a project we'll be looking at here in the next, this year. So we'll probably budget it for, for fiscal year 22 is when we'd want to implement that. The second issue was uh, the high level reservoir feeds a lot of people right now. So right now we have that, the high level reservoir, it's up above Moss Hill Road. And it uh, was built by the uh, Cascadia Ridge, is that what Don Oakley's project? Cascadia Ridge built the reservoir and the pipeline. But it has only one, one source of water that's stored at that tank, one pipeline that goes to all the development. And we have a, we have to use a pump station that's at our reservoir number one to feed that reservoir. And what we have found over the years is when, if reservoir one is depleted, uh, minimally depleted, if we're maybe, I don't know, a third of the way down. We have, we can't pump water to the high level reservoir. So that's an issue that we need to take uh, and do, and I don't remember if I called that number two or number three. Let me see. In fact, I've got them all in wrong order. So sorry. But the, the second task we want to do is we need to modify that pump station. So right now we have no redundancy in the high level system. And I've estimated we serve about 500 homes off of that high level system. Both the high level and the intermediate level. So we have three pressure zones in the water system. The low level pressure zone has three reservoirs that supply it. So it's in very good condition. It's got, it's all gravity supply. Uh, once we fill a tank from the water treatment plant, then gravity feeds everyone below that elevation. We then, from the low level tanks, we pump to the high level tank. And that tank uh, is the one that has no redundancy and is a single pipeline that connects to 500 homes. So if we had a problem with that tank, if we had a problem with that pipeline, uh, we're in trouble. So two issues that relate to that, one is the pump station. We need to relocate the pump station, somehow figure out how to lower it. To be able to pump from the low level system into the high level system. We've got lots of locations where the low level system and the high level system have pipes that are close together. So it's easy to move that station. That station was built back when Cascadara was developed on the hill. So that's, it's been there for a long time. Uh, the, the reservoir was, I'm sorry. I don't know when they put the pump station. That had to been when Cascadia Ridge came in. So the, the pump station is just below the low level reservoir, the old flat reservoir, the wood roof, a reservoir number one. So that's, that's one issue, the pump station. The second issue is, we talked about this redundancy. If we ever had a problem, if we needed to take reservoir three offline, 500 people are out of water. We have no way to supply them water. So the master plan identified another reservoir. So we'd have two reservoirs in that high service zone. The second reservoir would be towards the northeast corner of the urban growth boundary. So we need to be able to serve uh, even north of the airport. We need a pipeline to go to the north side of the airport. From the higher elevations in the east side. So, so that the other issue we need for redundancies. It's very important to build that second high level reservoir. So that one, I also am going to be sending Denise a, a scope of work to say what we should do. That one, I believe we estimated about 2.25 million dollars. That I think we should also program that into fiscal year 2022. So that one is, that was even more critical than the pump station. I think that we can eke by with the pump station. We have, there's things we can do. We know that if we top off the low level reservoirs, we can use the pump station. I think if we run the water treatment plant, we can surcharge the source, the source to where we can use the pump station. It's just a, it's a challenge. But the storage, if we were able to put that storage in, in fiscal year 22. Then we have the capability of if a line breaks, it's no big deal. We isolate the break. And we could supply all the residents from one side or the other. If a reservoir needs to be taken offline, we can take it offline, service it and the other reservoir can do the job. So the cost, the tank is nearly identical to the tank you built this year. I think we paid around 700,000 for the tank this year. But the difference is we have about 9,000 feet of pipeline that has to go in with the new reservoir. So, and that pipeline, there's a lot of growth right now. There's a lot of growth that's right up by Lawrence Road. That's in that high level zone that we should be able to coordinate with them so that we don't have to pay all those costs. Or at least we can recover some of those costs as those properties develop. So that's it for the water system. I think there's three pressing issues. One, the disinfection issue that we'd like to just add UV disinfection this year. The second thing is we need to be able to have reliable pumping capacity to the high level pump reservoir. And third, we need to expand the high level reservoir volume.
Oh, any questions for him on the water issues? Katie?
Um, so it sounds like all the work that we need to do for our water system right now is for the people who already live here. But uh, when we were talking about the wastewater before, we were given some metrics about uh, the capacity for growth. I was hoping that you might be able to speak a little bit about the capacity for growth as it relates to the water right now.
You know, we inventoryed that there would be about a thousand units on the high level and intermediate level water system. Currently there is about 500. So we have uh, I can see 500 of that. When we talked about a thousand capacity in the treatment plant, a thousand. Uh, EDUs, equivalent dwelling units, so households, single family residential households. We, in the water system, um, well, I guess I don't know how to relate the two. But I talked about a thousand EDU capacity at the wastewater plant. At the water plant, we have quite a bit of capacity. We, once we do these improvements, I haven't even, I didn't quantify the capacity of the water system, but it's. If you have a thousand in the wastewater, you probably have 1,600 or 2,000 in the water system of EDU capacity. Just because we have a, a large capacity at the water plant to produce water. We've got good storage and distribution systems. What we're seeing is right now, like the Faraday Hills subdivision, that's about 500 homes. I think there are another 500 that are going to be between Eagle Creek and Cemetery Road along that new alignment of Curran Creek. There, there's just a lot of growth in that northeast quadrant of the UGB. I, I don't think we'll be pushing capacity concerns on the water. The growth we're seeing, we're gonna probably see that thousand EDU come into us in the next five years for the wastewater plant. But the water has more capacity than a thousand EDUs.
Awesome. Thank you very much.
Denise, can you give us some idea of what the estimated growth is this year as far as houses built?
Uh, what was it? We had a hu, two, 180 houses built, I think, Melanie, was it?
I don't recall, but I think it's in Sadie's report here. How many building permits there were? Building, we issued 130 new single family home and four industrial commercial building permits in 2020.
130.
Okay. All right. Some new numbers here that talked more understandable. The wastewater plant back in May of this year, we summarized for DQ wastewater had a populate, it could serve a population of approximately 60, 350 people. So that, if you consider we're at about 4,000 now. 1,000 equivalent dwelling units at about 2.4 people per household would get you to 6,400 people. So I think a thousand at the wastewater plant's reasonable. The water system, we have a capacity, the source can serve uh, up to 7,400 people. For um, let me see if that was peak day. Yeah, it's peak day. So on the peak day, we can serve 7,400 people. On the average day, we can serve up to 13,000 people with the water system. So our water system is in good shape. Uh, the problem with the water system, if we think 40 years down the road, there's no more source of water for us. We gotta think hard to where the next source, once we use up all of the Clackamas River water. And some of the things we've been looking at is reclaimed waters. They, they allocate the, the water that's in the river, but they don't reallocate water that's treated and recycled back into the river. So our treatment plant is going to send 40 or 50% of every drop we take out of the Clackamas right back into the Clackamas. So we have actually laid the groundwork with OWRD, who gives us water rights. To say that we're interested in getting additional water rights in the Clackamas based on when we treat our wastewater to a high standard and put it back in the river.
Okay.
So the numbers for water, 13,000, that's a huge population. That.
Just so you guys know, last summer, peak day, we were at 63% capacity at the water plant. And that was one day out of the year that we hit that. Couple of close days to that, but that was on peak day, 63%.
And your, your water plant doesn't have a capacity of two right now. It's just under two, isn't it? What you, what do you think your max output is?
Probably 1.8.
So we're at 1.8. We can expand that to 2.6 with the approvals we have in place right now. And with the added storage, those peak days aren't as important. We can, we can meet those peak days by using our stored water. So it becomes important that maybe instead of a one peak day, we can handle a peak over a period of three or four days. And so it makes it to where the water plant doesn't have to have that capacity to meet that one maximum peak day.
Okay, great. All right, Joel.
All right. So um, a couple of questions for you and then I'll try to be quick. And uh, so when you're looking at the new reservoir location, um, would it be something that you consider for uh, backup uh, water sources? Should there be an issue with our river, we start to drop over time to put something like uh, wells in with new reservoir locations? Uh, that we could have as uh, backup water supply places, uh, sources? Not as a primary, because we wouldn't want to drain aquifers, but something that we could add into a plan there to have a backup well system, start building that in now.
Certainly. I think Mel and I have talked about that a little bit over the last couple of years because we do have some exposure. If, if Clackamas River, if the water plant had a problem, um, we don't have a source of water. So there are some few wells that are scattered about town now, um, that we've talked about perhaps identifying just as a, as a point where people could come with their own water jugs, fill up their water and, and take it under extreme emergency. And that's, that is something that's worth considering and working into a plan. Where we put the reservoir, I don't think it's a great idea to do that because we're up at 900 foot elevation. And so we're, we're another 150 feet above wherever that water table is. So the wells that we're seeing are down on the flat. They're up, up on uh, Eagle Creek. On the elevation of Eagle Creek is where we have a well that's going to be abandoned there. Uh, we actually, we have two wells that are going to be abandoned that we might talk to the owner about salvaging those to put into a, as just as a backup. Not to pipe it into the system, but just to have a source of water. If, if all else fails, we can have a generator, people can take their, their buckets and carboys down to the well, fill up and have water.
So what would be the, the likelihood of trying to put something that we could pipe into the system over time? Have emergency wells that could be piped in to be treated and, and used or however we need to at that point?
We could. That's very simple to pipe a well into the system. Your treatment requirements are much less stringent on well water. So um, no, that, that's very doable. I think that, I, I don't know. I, I know that they've looked at wells quite a bit in the past. I don't think wells have been large producers. I don't think you're able to support your demand with wells. So, but I do think it's very easy to pipe a well into your system. Even if it only produces a couple of hundred gallons a minute. But I think what might happen is if you've got a system where people are trying to use 600,000 gallons a day. And you tell them all of a sudden that we only have 100,000 gallons a day to use. You would probably deplete the system pressure immediately. And people wouldn't coordinate enough to, to restrict their use. So I think what, during an emergency situation, it's probably better to have a location with a good supply that's controlled, regulated. You're going to have to have security and people would just come have a place to fill up their water tanks. But it's easy to hook it into the system. So we could hook it into the system during those emergency times. I think it's, you would isolate it from the system.
Gotcha. Okay, that's a good thing. Um, I think that was a, a, a big portion of the questions I had regarding, regards to waters having a backup system. Uh, I guess one last question I have, and I haven't had a chance to really research this at all yet. We have a lot of obviously uh, water that tends to fall from the sky here in the States. Is there any way to use reclaimed water for that as an option? Or is that something that's just too prohibitively expensive and unrealistic?
Well, I think, you know, that water makes it to the Clackamas River and that is what we're using.
Okay.
So, you know, and the Clackamas River is fully allocated. So that's the challenge we have. I don't think we would have the ability to collect rainwater and use it. That would be a regulated water source that the Oregon Water Resource Department would want us to get a water right for that too.
Okay.
But think about it, that, that's the runoff that makes it to the Clackamas River.
Yeah, I just know you, you had said something that caught my attention earlier and that was that in 24, 40 years from now, whatever, we won't have the Clackamas River. Um, so is that because we're seeing a reduction in the amount of water that's being, we, you know, cycled back into the river through? You know, rivers and streams and water, rain and stuff like that or what?
No, no, it's just because they have a fixed quantity that they've allocated. So PGE owns a big right. All the water users along the Clackamas have rights to take that water. So those rights have been established for decades and there just aren't any more rights to get. However, that's it. We've been pushing the concept of, they've allocated the rights of the flow they measure. But as we pull that water out, treat it, put it back in, now that we really aren't using our right, we're putting it back in, we're replenishing what we took out of the river. So we're going to be pushing to get that right for that. And that should buy us uh, another multiple decades. Because we should be able to get another one or two MGD capacity out of that.
Okay.
But they're not restricting flows. It's just that as every city grows, they're using more water, just like you, you're using more water. So those, the rights that people own now are starting to, you know, be depleted. They're continually depleted each year.
That makes sense. All right. That's all the questions I had for you. Appreciate it.
Hey, any more questions on the water? I'm not seeing any. Okay. So go ahead and move on. If there's anything else on there.
Um, I, I just wanted to give an update. Kurt, are you, you're done with water and sewer, right?
Yes, I was going to stick, stick around for Chris to talk about our status this year.
Okay, Chris, go ahead.
Uh, do you want me to just go over what I gave you guys or does anybody have any questions on that?
Actually, I think most of the questions Kurt, you answered.
Okay, all right, very good.
Um, but I do want Kurt to stay on for just one minute because he is familiar with our Wade Creek, Wade Creek Park Phase Three. And I kind of wanted to just talk about that, even though it's in a, uh, someone else's report. I don't know who did it, but anyway. Um, so we're at 100% design and we're actually, Kurt is working on bid documents. And Kurt, can you kind of give us the, the, the timeline that you vision for that?
It's going to be advertised in the middle of March. The bid opening is I believe on the uh, eighth of April. So they anticipate bringing it back to the council on the second meeting in April. And uh, the plans are done. We're just not anxious to send it out to bid because all of our work is pretty limited to the in-water work window, which can't start till July 15. So we're, we're bidding it early, even for that July 15, but there's just lots of time before the contractor can really mobilize and start doing the heavy work. But middle of March it'll advertise, April 8, as I recall, is the bid opening date. And uh, we won't make it to that, you have a council meeting just three days after April 8, to see nine, 10, 11, 12. You have a meeting on the 12th, but we plan to come back on the meeting, on the second meeting.
26.
You know, on the 26th is when we plan to come back.
And that will include the whole project. And um, one of the parts of that project, um, it kind of is um, in this, in with storm drain. The storm drain is going to pay for a lot of the creek and the culvert replacements. And so there's going to be a part of that project is going to be, you know how we did the new road up to about halfway down the library? We're going to take that new road now down to um, right past Wade Creek Park. And there'll be a new culvert put in because that culvert is completely gone. I don't think there's any bottom in that culvert. It'll be enlarged, it'll be improved and the street will be widened there where it kind of pinches in where that um, bridge is. So the street will be widened the same width as the street that's coming up to it and that leaves from it. And then there'll be sidewalks and curbs on both sides there to get a little bit more done in our active transportation plan. And that is part of that project. So um, we're excited to get that going. And we also, with the mill site, uh, we have. And we also, with the mill site, uh, we have it in there that when that mill site gets developed, that they will have to daylight the, the creek. So, um, the, putting the creek back to its natural, uh, creek state, and then having it daylighted is gonna really help with, uh, uh, fish. I think Chris was telling us that, um, the creek, that, uh, it goes under the highway, and it comes out over there at the Timber Park, and Mitch, I think, saw fish trying to go up the creek. The, was it steel? What kind of fish, Chris?
Oh, oh salmon.
And so it, uh, it'll be nice if the fish, uh, it can, we get restored in that creek, because people can remember when they used to fish in that creek, so.
Great. Paul, you have something you wanna ask?
Yeah, just real quick, Kurt, you'd mentioned a July fifteenth start date. What, what was that? Was there a limitation on that, or was that just a targeted start date?
No, there's a limitation on that. So there's, there's an in, in-water work window that Department of State lands requires us to do the work in the creek. So they don't allow us to start until July fifteen.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, any more questions on that particular area? Uh, Denise, is there anything you wanna add in at this point?
Um, well, just, uh, since we're talking infrastructure, just the plans for, uh, next year, we're looking at doing some more active transportation plan infills with sidewalks. We haven't identified them yet. But, um, we also are gonna look at, is it time to do the hillway connection? Um, where we're gonna connect hillway through the school property, which we already have the easement for, the roadway right away, and connect it with Campanella, so that, we're looking at seeing if we can get that in the budget for, um, twenty-one, twenty-two.
Yeah, that sounds really nice.
We don't have anything else in storm, except for storm is paying for, a lot of the storm SDCs will be going toward the, culverts going through the park, so.
Okay, great. Well, it seems that we're through this first part pretty fast. We're about a half hour ahead of schedule. So we can do this two ways. Staff has provided us with a excellent goodie bag along the way here, so we wanna thank them for that. That's wonderful to have that. So we're gonna have to kind of eat and run here, so we can get through all this. But, uh, you're at your first break, so if all of you want to take the break, that's fine, or we could stay and work through it, it's up to you.
Um, if we could take a short break, that way I can get Taylor and, uh, let me see, Matt's on the line, Taylor and Michelle, because it's a little early, and then we can get going on the next, the next part.
Okay, great. Well, let's all take a break then, and, uh, take a breath and, oh.
Thanks, Kurt.
You have something?
Thank you.
Thank you.
You later.
We appreciate you, thank you.
Chris and Don.
We didn't get to talk to Don very much, but that's okay, we'll get him.
I, I got one quick question, if I could.
Yeah.
Uh, the work on Sixth and Main, what is that gonna entail, out of curiosity?
Uh, I think you got sent the plans for that, the picture, so it's gonna shorten that crosswalk section from about a hundred feet to a forty-foot cross. So it's gonna pull in the, um, it's gonna also include the start of bike lanes on each side, but they won't go very far. So those won't really be in effect till we get further down Main Street. But it will not close the road, they're gonna work on it, so the road is open during that thing. We had a meeting with the school, they're all on board.
Okay, I guess that brings your question up then on Wade, when they do all the culvert work and stuff, is that gonna close the road?
I don't know.
Well, it has to.
That will close the road, it probably will for a short time, so they'll have to go through, uh, turn on Broadway there and go up Broadway.
I think they talked about, um, having that closed for a week, and re, I, maybe you remember more, Kurt, but I think it was about a week, they'd have people detour around that area.
Isn't there, isn't there a connection that you go by the school and kind of up and around and kind of come up?
On ten.
Do we have speed bumps in there or anything, if we're gonna be having them go by the school during that time?
No, no.
Okay. Can we, can we at least maybe plan to put like our, uh, our speed?
Finger up there?
Yeah, something that, because if we're getting all our traffic's gonna go there for even a week, kids are gonna be there, and that just kind of got me concerned, I guess. So, all right, that's all I have, thanks.
Okay.
Hey, thank you. All right, let's all take a break for.
So till about ten F, two-ten.
Okay, two-ten.
Okay. Are we ready?
Okay, are we just about there?
Yeah.
Everybody ready to continue on?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, so now we have, um, we, uh, Michelle Kinnaman is gonna talk to you a little bit about library. And Taylor is gonna, our planner, is gonna talk to you, um, they all have submitted reports, so they can answer any questions. But she's gonna focus on the TSP and the HNA updates coming up. And then we have Matt Lorenzen, the Economic Development Manager, and he's gonna, we'll discuss the Chad Committee. Guys had wanted to discuss that after the start of the year, so we're gonna do that on here, and then the vertical housing ordinance that he's working on.
Okay, great.
So, uh, we'll start with Michelle.
Good.
Okay, hi, everybody.
How are you?
Hello. In case I haven't met all of you, I am Michelle Kinnaman, I'm the library director at Escata Library. Uh, just started, um, finished my eleventh year, which is kind of amazing to, to imagine, but, uh, I hope to keep going on for a few years. Um, you did see my report on the services that we offer our public in twenty-twenty, and if you have any questions on that, I can answer those, uh, towards the end. Um, you know, I just did want to emphasize that even though our doors were closed this year, we did offer service to the public in one way or another. Pretty much the whole time we were closed since March thirteenth, we've always answered the phones. And then, uh, we started our holds pickup service on June second. It did take a long time for us to get some of the PPE in. I think some of the city staff will remember, too, how long it took for us to get some things, because everybody wanted it at the same time. So now that we're up and running with holds pickup, it's going great, and people seem to be really happy that they're still able to get their library materials. And I'm grateful for their support. Um, I just wanna mention a couple of things that are going on right now, some of the newer things we've just added. Um, we added a New York Times, um, you know, free New York Times off of the link.org website. So that's where you go if you have a library card and you wanna use your, use our catalog to place holds. And we also had, um, added a service along with a lot of the other Clackamas County libraries called Book Flicks. This is a early literacy tool where parents and kids can read a book together. The, the book will be on the screen, and you can read along with it, and, or you can listen to it. This is a really great tool, too, for, um, uh, English as a Second Language learners, um, especially when you're using like kids' books, because the language is really simple, and you can see the words and go along with that. So we're really happy to add that to our early literacy, um, toolbox. Um, soon we're gonna be adding a printing and copying station in the floor room where we're doing holds pickup. The Friends of Escata Library have donated, donated the funds to buy another printer to hook up to one of our existing computers, so people can come in. It's gonna be strictly self-serve on that. Um, we're also, this is really exciting, we're adding a service called Creative Bug. And it's one thing I've learned about our community is that crafts and creativity is one of the most favorite things of our citizens. So crafting videos, instructional crafting videos, that's what Creative Bug is. And it'll be something people can log into and choose their favorite crafting area, and just watch things and go for it. And another thing we're adding, um, soon is, probably by next week, actually, um, is mobile hotspots that people can check out if they do not have internet connectivity service. They check out a hotspot and take it home, and it enables them to log onto the internet that way. Uh, I also wanted to mention that yesterday I participated in an overview of an equity, diversity, and inclusion toolkit that a committee of Oregon library staff has put together. And it's gonna be distributed by the State Library of Oregon to all library directors. And what's great about this is it's really focused on library service. And, um, since we're all going into our training, starting tomorrow night on EDI, I just thought this would be a really good foundation for libraries to build upon. You know, we deal with the public, and that's kind of our mission. We deal with all kinds of people all the time. So we just wanna build on to our knowledge base about EDI going forward. And we're all, the four, the four full-time staff that are participating in the training, then this next couple of months, we're really looking forward to doing that with you all. Um, so with that, I'm kind of bringing you up to speed. If there's anything else I could answer for you, I'm happy to do so.
I had a couple of things. Sean, you're muted.
There you go, Katie, go ahead.
Um, first of all, thank you, Michelle, for everything that you guys do at the library.
You're welcome.
I was, uh, curious, um, I know that you and I had worked, uh, back in twenty-nineteen when the council had approved the youth council of Escata, and, um, just due to the timing of it all, it was really kind of impossible in May to get off the ground before the end of the school year. And then, of course, uh, we all know what happened in twenty-twenty. I was wondering, though, if we did want to, uh, especially after the last year of, um, politics that we have had, uh, I wonder if there might be more interest in youth involvement, and if maybe we started that, uh, again next year, if we could still work together, the library was kind of, uh, um, a good partnership in, in that council. And I was wondering if you guys were still interested in having that partnership with the youth council in the future.
Um, yes, um, really, the interest hasn't waned, it's more like the staffing. We lost one of our full-time people, we actually lost a, um, sort of our, um, bilingual outreach person who went to grad school, and we're down to two librarians and myself. So we'll work towards that, and I agree with you, I think it's a prime time to be having those conversations with young people. Um, probably what would help as well is if we had some kind of a, um, person inside the school district, maybe a history teacher, who could, um, get kids interested in this topic. We did have one person that applied, but I didn't really see any interest with other students, and maybe they just didn't know about it, so, you know, we can work on that.
That would be really awesome, and I don't know if you have any connections at the school. I know that, uh, um, that April, I had messaged every government teacher, social studies teacher, history teacher. I reached out to the, uh, superintendent of the school district, I reached out to several other administrative staff and principals. It didn't really seem like there was a lot of, um, help coming from the school at that time. But we also, you and I talked about the, the fact that it was also May, they were, you know, six weeks, uh, away from being out of school. There was a lot going on at that time, so I would really love to see, um, maybe, you know, uh, i- if we could start it now, if we wanted to, maybe, maybe you and I could meet about it and see if, uh, maybe the, the model that we had before of trying to get kids, um, excited about it through the summer and kind of orientated through the summer, so that come September, they're all, uh, ready to go on board. Maybe that's the model we wanna stick with, if we wanna try, try a different model, um. Maybe even if we reached out and found a kid who kind of wanted to take this on as their thing. Um, I'm sure that there might be some kids in our community who wanna help us get this, uh, off the ground and running, and they might be the best resource for us, so.
Let's talk.
Yeah, let's talk. Um, I would really love to see the youth council happen this year. And then, yeah, that was gonna be my next question, actually. I'm aware that your, uh, your, your librarian who left, um, sounds like she got a really great job in, uh, Multnomah. Oh, did she not? Oh, that's sad.
She's in grad school.
Oh, really? Okay, yeah, she, uh, was one of my residents, and she had told me that she got a really great offer to go to Multnomah County, but, uh,
Who are you, who are you talking about?
Alicia.
Alice.
Alice, yeah, oh, oh, yeah, Alice, her, her full name, yeah, but, uh, yeah, that's who I'm talking about. When she, when she moved, she was telling me about it. But, uh, um, that being said, is there anybody else in your staff, or are you looking to, um, maybe hire someone who's going to take on, uh, that bilingual? Because I know she was integral to our library and setting up the, um, Spanish conversation classes and, and, and things like that. Or is there any plan to, uh, basically fill that void that she left?
Um, there's no one on our staff that can fill that. The position is budgeted for a full-time person, for whatever we fill it with. So it really just depends on funding.
Okay.
Going forward, because as we work for, work on our budget next year, there's a lot of things that we're trying to consider. You know, we've been closed, and we're not getting any, we're not getting any fines, we're not getting any floor room, um, money. And it just really depends on the budget. So we'll see what happens going forward. I would love to fill it.
So that was gonna be my last question for you, is, um, COVID nineteen and, and the shutdowns and, uh, the revenue have impacted everybody. Uh, my question to you is, how much has it impacted the library's funds, do you know?
Well, every year we budget for fines, we budget for floor room usage funds. Um, we budget for donations, uh, we have used book sales. We sell things like thumb drives during the year. So the, the only number that I know for sure, because I don't have my budget in front of me, is that we budgeted eleven thousand dollars for fines. And this year, um, all of Clackamas County libraries have not charged fines for any patrons. Like, there's no fines, so we've had practically nothing coming in on that. And then nothing for the floor room either, so, I don't know, fifteen thousand dollars, possibly. So it's, it's not a huge amount of money, but it's, you need to think about that. It's considerable.
Absolutely. Thank you so much, Michelle.
Thank you, Katie.
Charity, go ahead.
Uh, yeah, so, um, first of all, I just wanna say, you know, thanks for all the work that you do and, and figuring out to navigate through, um, COVID nineteen, all the, you know, the restrictions and the mandates. Um, I really appreciate it. Uh, I love the libraries, love them. So, um, I just had a question, so all the new things that you're going to be implementing here very soon. Um, I'm, I'm an optimist and very, you know, glass half-full. So when we can go back to, you know, going into the library and being in person again, will these new things that you're implementing, are they gonna be able to remain, um, as options for people, such as, um, the book flicks, the, um, mobile hotspots, things like that? Just thinking of, even though we still go back in person, just kind of, um, some of those who are needing those services still due to either finances or whatnot.
Yes, definitely. Yes. Um, I, I will speak to mobile hotspots. Um, there's gonna be a need for that all the time. But what we've done with those is, um, we also had that funded by Friends of the Library as a six-month trial. And so after six months, we're going to assess the usage on that and see how people felt about it. We'll have a little survey when they check out their hotspot, and, you know, things like, how was the reception? And, and just generally, did it work out for you? And so we always have the option with T-Mobile to add more hotspots if it was successful. So instead of six, we could add, you know, ten, or however many we think we need. So yes, that could go, that'll still go on.
Okay, great.
Yeah, thank you for the question.
Yeah, and then Katie, just an idea for your, um, when you're looking for, uh, interest for high schools. I don't know, I know you maybe reached out to, um, history teachers, civics, or social studies. Uh, I don't know, I'd have to check in, and I'm, I'm really bad, because my kids aren't in high school yet. But if there's a speech and debate team, they might be interested. I know a lot of kiddos that, you know, who do, at, at least when I was going to school, those that did speech and debate, really, really in, involved and interested on the political side of things, so, I don't know, just another idea.
Yeah.
Uh, Jerry?
Excuse me. Um, I was, uh, also thinking about the same, towards, about the same thing. Um, Katie, some, something you might wanna, um, get involved, it would be the upcoming year. Um, Katie, some, something you might want to um, get involved, it would be the upcoming year seniors see, you know, maybe uh, put a survey out to any of them, because every year the seniors have to do a senior project. And this would be a, a, an amazing opportunity for a senior project to get, to get this up and running, to, you know, help get this up and running. Um, and you know, you and Michelle, uh, any other resources that um, we have would give them a leg up and getting this project up and running. So um, in, incoming seniors would be a, 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 a good place to, you know, like I said, put a survey out, see if anybody would be interested in that. So that's all I got.
Okay, thank you, Jerry. Anybody else wishing to come? Oh, Joel?
All right, uh, so a couple of things. Um, uh, the mobile hotspot, that's part of it, I wanted to ask you about that. Um, so is, what, was it considered because you guys don't have fines and stuff this year? Was it considered to possibly um, take a rent on those and people take them, you know, charge them $5 and have it for X amount of time? So that way you can try to recoup some of the loss on uh, on, you know, late charges? Uh, cause you guys said you, you were missing about $11,000 for the year for the hotspots. When you put, implement it, maybe see if you can lease them out for a small uh, fee or something to offset that loss in revenue.
You know, um, Joel, you were cutting out quite a bit. I'm not sure that I heard everything that you, that you were saying.
I can try, I can try that again. Uh, saying for the, for the hotspots, um, was it considered at all to possibly try to rent those for like a low cost? Maybe like a couple bucks or five bucks uh, for X amount of time? Um, and to try to offset the money that you guys uh, didn't get in fines for the year? You know, you said you're missing about $11,000. So when you start putting the hotspots out, they're having a, a little bit of revenue for the year coming in through that. Might help offset not only the cost of having them with the service, but also maybe start to replace some of that uh, that revenue a little bit.
Oh, okay, I heard you much better that time. Thank you. Um, we, we actually got funding for that from Friends of Estacada Library. And we have funding from them every year for projects like this. And one thing to remember with libraries is we strive to offer services to people at no cost. Because most people are paying their library district fee. Um, if you're a homeowner, you do pay that. So we did not think about um, charging to rent those out. Um, our colleagues around the county also do, do that. So we were thinking of it more as it's part of our collection, even though we're just sort of, we're not renting them from T-Mobile. Um, they're charging us just a monthly fee and that we're free to keep them afterwards. So, and it was surprisingly inexpensive, although I, I can't remember what it costs right now. Um, so no, to answer your question, no, we wouldn't think of charging them.
Okay, well, it's something to maybe reconsider, considering you're, you're down about, you know, over 10 grand in potential fees for the year.
Right, but the Friends of the Library have paid for that and they would pay for it going forward.
I, I, I get the fact that it's covered. I'm trying to find a way to offset your costs. It's just, it's something to consider.
I think also important to remember though, Counselor Lake Key, that uh, the library is a service, not a business that is profit-driven. So um, I mean, I realize that they're down $15,000, but I don't think that the the reaction or the response to that fact should be, well, let's just start charging people for the services that our public library should already be providing to people. And for me, I'm really excited about the hotspots because it's going to end up benefiting people who are uh, economically disadvantaged if they're already, if they're, if they're lacking internet access. And I think that being able to offer internet access to low income for free is actually uh, something we should strive for and not ask the library to reconsider.
All right, that's, you got a good points on there. Um, okay. So uh, and you said it's going forward, it's, it's funded by the uh, Friends of the Library. So that's not additional uh, expense from the city has to cover on those. Cause I, I completely understand and I'm all about getting people who don't have uh, access to the internet, the, you know, get them that access. Um, the second part of the question is uh, have we considered? And is, is this, is this a program that's going on throughout the, the, the state already? So there's been a lot of uh, backup information on it coming from a cybersecurity perspective. I understand that the situation, I guess, could also be abused, if that's been considered as well. So I just, I just wanted to ask these questions.
Yeah, thanks so much.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions from Michelle? Before we move this along? Okay, we thank you. And then I asked in the future, what's up?
Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
I'd ask in the future if anybody wishes to speak on any of these issues, please raise your hand or signal me before speaking. Uh, so I can address that at the time. I greatly appreciate it, thank you. Um, now the next on our list is Taylor and the planning.
Okay, hello.
Hello, how are you?
Good, thank you.
Good.
Yeah, good to see everybody. So um, the two, two major um, planning initiatives that we're kind of looking at for 2021 um, are the TSP, Transportation System Plan and uh, Housing Needs Analysis, HNA. Um, and just to sort of like frame that um, a little bit, I'll also briefly review what is in the, the summary report that you all got um, about planning-related things from 2020. Um, in March of last year, um, the council approved Ordinance 2019-005, which basically created these six new zones. Um, and updated the comprehensive plan with findings from the Economic Opportunities Analysis, the 2019 EOA. And the 2019 Housing Memo, which is um, which was basically a sort of preliminary or baseline housing needs analysis, not a full HNA, which we'll talk about that in a second. Um, and that, that project was also um, shaped by input from a, a um, public survey that went out in I think, summer of 2019. Um, and then testimony at the three public hearings for that. Um, and so that was a big, that was a big project that um, changed our um, land use designations for a lot of, I don't know the number off the top of my head, but um, hundreds of acres of, of the city uh, were re-designated, rezoned. Um, and so um, those changes uh, will certainly impact how, how the city, how development happens in those areas. Um, but the Transportation System Plan was not updated with that, right? And so there are um, pieces of the TSP that maybe we'll want to revisit in the context of thinking, okay, well, this land isn't, isn't going to be developed with industrial uses anymore. How might that change how we want to use our streets or what kind of pedestrian amenities we want, et cetera? Um, anyway, so um, there's that. There's also been um, a ton of growth or at least anticipated growth. I, I don't remember Denise, maybe you have the number of building permits that were issued um, at the top of your mind?
Yeah, we had 130 home, new homes and then five, four or five commercials, so.
Yeah. Um, so both between building permits and also um, annexations. Probably around 200 acres of land annexed into the city total last year. Um, a lot of that residential. Um, and then also subdivision applications um, that came through last year with the, the Faraday Hills um, subdivision that's up off of Deuce Road. That one's already um, getting built out and several others that were listed there in the report. Um, so there's a lot going on, a lot of growth and a lot of um, change in terms of um, projected land uses or the land uses that we might anticipate in different parts of the city. Um, and so that's a little bit of context for why, part of why. Um, it's important that we update these two long-range planning documents. Um, or one being an analysis that'll help guide um, our long-range planning around transportation and housing. So um, I guess I'll start with the TSP. I think that was the first one that I listed in the report too. So the TSP, your Transportation System Plan is basically a document that um, describes what the community intends for its transportation system to, to get developed as. Um, it is supposed to outline different projects and um, different connections and policies that um, will all serve to create a transportation system that um, provides enough capacity for the anticipated growth and uses and um, you know, volumes of traffic. Um, and also provides the appropriate um, types of um, improvements and facilities and amenities that the community has for all of the different modes of transportation that um, exist in your community or that your community wants to uh, to be able to use to get around and to get around safely. Um, and so that, that document is a, a long-range planning document. So it's a, it's um, looking 20 years into the future and trying to think, what do we need our transportation system to look like? Um, what, what capacity can we anticipate needing, et cetera? Um, and our Transportation System Plan currently um, is from 2007. So um, I guess this year it would be uh, 14 years old. Um, so it's a, a bit outdated. Some pieces of it have been updated. We had the um, 2018 Active Transportation Plan updated that chapter of our TSP. Um, similarly, the 2011, the Downtown and Riverside Area Plan also updated um, parts of the TSP. Um, but overall, the whole document is a bit outdated. And so last summer, um, I guess last spring, um, every year we get local jurisdictions in, in Oregon get notified that the um, TGM grant, it's an annual grant, Transportation Growth Management, TGM. Um, that TGM grants are open and available for applications. Um, and so the, the TGM grant is something that ODOT, the Department of Transportation, and um, DLCD, the Department of Land Conservation and Development, they um, work together to provide these grants um, to local communities to do transportation and land use planning. Um, so those grants opened up. We thought about, okay, what types of projects might we have that um, could be served by this grant? We applied um, for the grant to update our TSP and uh, received the grant in, I guess, September. And so since then, um, we've been working with our TGM grant manager at ODOT to kind of refine the project scope of work. Um, and we anticipate that we'll be putting out the request for proposals, because well, it'll be consultants ultimately uh, doing the actual um, most of the project work, certainly all of the analysis. Um, so the RFP will get posted. I think it'll be mid-February. Um, and then around April, we'll have a, our project consultant selected. And then, so we can anticipate that the actual project, um, that there'll have to be some contract negotiation. So the actual project will probably begin in the summer, maybe June or July of this year. And um, we anticipate no longer than like a year and a half to project completion. Um, and so at the end of that project, we'll have a um, an adoption-ready uh, TSP that will, upon, upon council um, adoption, uh, that will update our Chapter 10, Transportation Chapter of our comprehensive plan. And then also whatever um, pieces of the development code would need to get um, updated in order to implement those, those things upon deba-, uh, yeah, development. Um, that's kind of a high-level overview. I want to pause right there and see if anyone has got questions or if there's anything I missed. Uh, Denise, that you can think of, or Melanie, please chime in.
I just want to, some of the things that, oh, Mayor?
Let's go ahead.
Um, I just wanted to uh, you know, what, a lot of the things that they're looking at is with, with the growth, we know where the growth is going now, we know where our UGB is. Um, to, part of the problem right now is the classification of roads. What was, what was originally maybe a neighborhood road is now a minor collector or a major collector. So it's going to look at the status of the, the roadways and, and be sure we have the correct level of roadway for each area defined. And it's also going to look at some of our problem areas and our upcoming areas that we want to develop, such as the mill property. It's going to take a look at that access down to the highway there that the mill already has, the old mill road that access the property. And then the connections from the mill to um, our downtown and our uptown areas. Um, it's also going to look at the highway and the um, we, ODOT has said we can only have one um, traffic light because the intersections are too close together. It's going to look at how do we resolve the issue of people pulling out on Main Street? And pulling out from the highway, coming from St., Malala and Colton, where it backs up. And so it's going to take into consideration all of those issues that we have now that we didn't have back when it was originally done in 14 years ago. So it kind of looks at all of that thing. So if you have anything that you want us to focus on, um, just send, shoot me an email if you have any other suggestions on areas that you're concerned about.
Great, thank you, Denise. Um, anybody else have some questions for Taylor or Denise? On this, uh, Paul?
Is this uh, does this look at recreational at all too? Like walkways, runways, bikeways, things like that? Or is it primarily uh, just commuting and getting around town via, with vehicles?
Um, absolutely. It would also look at recreational, um, yeah, getting around for all ki-, all kinds of needs. Um, multi-use trails, pedestrian trails, um, connections to parks. It's really um, it's not, it's not exclusive to people getting around for school or work um, or basic needs. It's um, it's looking at how do people need to get around or want to get around for any reason, for sure.
Denise?
Paul, to just expand on that, we did recently update our transport TSP plan, two of the chapters, when we did our Active Transportation Plan. And that does address the recreational aspects. Um, it, it has included the bridge going over from Mackiver to Timber Park. Um, crossings on the highway to make it easier for pedestrians to get the connection to the park. So that has been done and that probably um, that area probably won't be as focused on this because we just did it. But it, it naturally will be reviewed though.
Okay. Does that answer your questions, Paul?
Yeah, it does. I get, I get another one here.
Okay.
Um, if, if, as we come up with ideas or thoughts, problem areas that we come across, are, are you fine with us just sending piecemeal things to you, one at a time? Or do you want a coordinated response? Piecemeal?
Have them send it or you'll forget it like I do.
Yeah, true, true. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Uh, any other questions pertaining to this? Um, I'm not seeing any hands. So, okay, go ahead with the next on that.
All right, and so then the other um, long-range planning uh, process that uh, is uh, slated to happen this year is a Housing Needs Analysis, which is something that cities um, and regions should ideally update periodically and have, have one that they can reference when they're making um, decisions on um, anything related to their residential land supply. Um, unfortunately, our current Housing Needs Analysis is from 1979 and it's the only one that Estacada's ever had. And it um, it was a, a 20-year projection to um, the year 2000. And so um, if you look back at those numbers, it's kind of funny to look at what's going on now and what it, what it said would be going on in 2000. But um, yeah, so uh, uh, the 2019 Housing Memo was um, something that we received uh, by participating in the Clackamas County Regional Housing Needs Analysis, which is a little bit different than a standard local housing needs analysis. But um, but we did get sort of a Housing Needs Snapshot, kind of high-level overview um, of what our housing needs are projected to be based on what's going on, or what was going on in 2019. Even since then, a lot has changed. A lot of, um, like I said, annexations and subdivisions have been approved. Um, and a lot of development already has happened um, just since that um, analysis was done. Um, so yeah, um, the other thing is that um, having a uh, a legal, and, and this is legal as described by, I, I don't, I'm not going to remember the like, O R S, like Oregon Revised Statute Number here, but, um, the state has a, a very specific definition of what constitutes a, a full housing needs analysis. And so, um, when a city adopts that housing needs analysis, those findings are, um, are, uh, serve as uh, more sturdy legal justification for, um, rezoning certain ways and for maybe expanding your urban growth boundary. Um, there, there are all kinds of things that uh, how the findings of a housing needs analysis can, um, can allow a city to do. Because when you need to do certain things that the state has to approve, the state is going to say, okay, well, you, you need to prove to us why you want to make these changes to your residential land supply. And so the housing needs analysis can provide those findings. And, um, so that's just one, one reason to do it. Another reason being, um, it helps us understand what, what is needed currently in our community in terms of housing, um, and what we can anticipate needing based on projections that are based on the trends that we're seeing, um, demographically, population change um, and changes in, um, community preference. Um, so there'll, there can be, there certainly is the, um, public involvement component of the analysis itself is a pretty technical, um, process that doesn't involve much public involvement. But, um, after the analysis, we take those findings and that's when we, um, come together and have some, some public involvement activities, maybe an open house, thinking about, okay, these are the needs that we're looking at. What types of changes do we want to make in order to accommodate those needs? Um, and that's where hearing from the community, hearing from stakeholders, um, and then having conversations at the public hearing level comes in to decide what do we want to do to address these housing needs that we can anticipate. So, uh, the process there, um, that R F P actually went out this week. So we will be hearing from consultants by the, uh, middle of March. I think that the deadline for them to submit proposals, uh, is that, is March twelfth. I, I suspect that we'll, we'll hear from the same consultants that, that gave us our twenty nineteen housing memo. But there were, um, at least four consultants, um, received the directly received an invitation or a notification of the R F P. And then it's also posted on our website. So, in case that's something that anybody wants to, uh, distribute among firms, uh, or people that, you know, conduct housing needs analyses. And then, um, around early April, we would, uh, we would have a contract ready and, um, project would start soon after, so probably May. Um, and that project is anticipated to take maybe six months to a year. There is an optional piece of the project that, um, we will decide once we receive proposals. Whether, whether we want to include, um, a housing, basically like a housing action plan or housing production strategy, um, as part of the housing needs analysis. So that would, if we want that, and if, if that's something that, um, the proposers include and, and they, they make a good proposal, um, that, that it sounds like we want to include that, um, and that's something that we can budget for. Then that's something that is written into the R F P that we can opt to include in the process, but that would lengthen it. So that would make it maybe more of a year and a half long process. Um, because that, that will certainly involve, uh, more community, community input, um, public involvement type stuff. Um, and then, uh, adopting the actual H N A, adopting those findings. That would compel us to, um, make those changes either to our, to our zoning designations or to our U G B. Whatever the changes can be, we can be flexible in that. But, um, when you adopt the findings of the housing, housing needs analysis, the state requires you to also make changes in your comp plan and your development code that, um, that will, um, address the need identified in the housing needs analysis that you are adopting. So, so, um, that's, that would be the benefit of including the housing, housing action plan or housing production strategy um, as a component in this project. Um, because we're going to have to do something like that eventually anyway, when we want to, or if we want to adopt the findings of the housing needs analysis. I hope that I explained that in not too confusing or convoluted a way. There might be a lot there. So, um, yeah, maybe if anybody has questions, I could.
Sure, I'm going to entertain those right now. Um, uh, Charity, did you have something?
Yeah, I'm sorry. So you're saying that the, the housing needs analysis is done, it's done every twenty years? Is that?
It should probably be done closer to every ten years. Ours, our last one, like I said, was from like nineteen eighty. Um, so, and that's okay. I mean, we're not. It would have been helpful probably for the city's planning purposes to, to have one, at least one more done somewhere in there. But the, you can, you can do them as often as you want. I mean, there's nothing telling you that you can't do another housing needs analysis five years after you just had one. Um, but the, the twenty years, um, I mentioned, that is the, the planning horizon that we're looking at when we're doing those projections. So all of the, the projections and the trends that you're looking at, you're, you're, um, anticipating, you're trying to anticipate the need that there will be in twenty years.
Okay. Yeah, I was just curious because I'm, I'm, I'm reading this and, I mean, you know, once you get the analysis back from, you know, who, who you've contracted out and if you're also looking at public information and everything to take, you know, like you were saying, up to a year and a half. During that year and a half time, we're already, you know, growing, expanding, things are changing and, and shifting. And as key, as things are, you know, previously mentioned, like growth is happening super, super quickly. So I was just wondering like, yeah, like you, it's, you know, well, why originally asked how often should one do one? Since we're having such rapid growth and development in Estacada, um, but if it's, you know, once every ten years or so, but I, I, I was just curious how with things changing and shifting so quickly, if that would screw anything up in the development, I say we, you know, okay, something, you know, now, but then like three years later, does that, we have to, you know, go back and then go, okay, now we got to change this because we, you know, increased our population by X. Or is that all like really, is this just broad projection to where that they take into kind of what the growth has been in the past two, three years, five years? I mean, I just don't know. This is all new to me. So these are just.
Sure. I, I do think it's, it's, um, a little broader than, you know, whatever change would happen in the following three years. It's unlikely that that would, I don't want to say compel, it's unlikely that it would be so drastic that we would think, wow, our housing needs analysis is now way off. Possible, but, but probably unlikely. Um, the other thing that, the other thing that makes this a pretty good time, I think to do it, even considering the sort of growth spurt that we're looking at right now. That we have, we have that analysis, that preliminary analysis from twenty nineteen. And we also have countywide numbers from the, the Clackamas County, um, regional housing needs analysis to kind of lean on also that I think really, um, is going to contextualize the, the more recent growth within the past ten years of growth. If you look at the past ten years of growth, um, just as a whole, that growth doesn't look quite as drastic as when you would maybe look at the chart of the past ten years and, oh, these past couple of years, suddenly. And so having that very recent twenty nineteen, um, analysis to look at, I think will, will allow those projections to be a lot more accurate to what we're about to.
Kind of provides a framework, if you will.
Um, so I'm surprised that this hasn't come up. Uh, the twenty, or the two thousand nineteen Legislative Assembly passed a plethora of, uh, new rules and laws and regulations, um, all surrounding housing. Of course, during the, the bill that was passed about the, um, about how certain cities of a certain size need to do away with a single family only zoning. Uh, we weren't affected by that. However, there was another component of that bill that was passed at the same time that actually required cities to get onto a, a normal schedule of having housing needs analysis completed. I think it's every ten years and they're phasing people in to be, uh, compliant in five. So, uh, am I, my misunderstanding that? I was under the impression that under Oregon state law, we are required to have a housing needs analysis completed within the next five years and then get onto a normal schedule. And I can't remember if it's every five years or every ten years, but that's now Oregon law, is it not?
That sounds familiar, um, but I'm not positive.
Okay, uh, because I, I attended a workshop on it at the League of Oregon Cities, uh, conference in Bend back in September of two thousand and nineteen, when that Legislative Assembly had, um, already adjourned and we already knew what the laws being passed were. Um, and that was something that they gave us a heads up about back in September of two thousand and nineteen, that every single one of our cities by Oregon law was going to be required to have a housing needs analysis completed within the next five years. And then to get onto a normal schedule of having a, of having a housing needs analysis completed on a, like a set schedule in the future. So we might need to look into that and just make sure that what we're going to be doing is also in compliance with that, which is one of the reasons why. I mean, first of all, everybody knows I'm always going to be in support of a housing needs analysis, um, because our housing, uh, diversity is quite lacking. But that being said, uh, if we're going to have to do it anyways, and if every other city in the state of Oregon is going to have to do it anyways, I imagine that at a certain point, consultation groups are going to be hard to find, or they're going to be stretched thin because every city is going to be looking at doing this around the same time. So has that been a concern that you have? Have you noticed that any of the consultation, um, firms that you've been speaking to, are they pretty overwhelmed with this new flood of cities that are all requiring housing needs analysis in the next five years?
That's a good question. Um, I, I've only really spoken with, um, I guess, I guess a couple of different people at different firms that do. Um, but I, I only have, uh, network relationships with, um, people at two different firms that do housing needs analyses. And I haven't heard from them that they've, that they've been overwhelmed necessarily. But, uh, I could, yeah, I'm, I'm not sure. I'm not sure if that's, if that's a concern that's come up.
Taylor, maybe you could bring this back to us with a little more information when you do get this. I think it's important that we reflect on, um, uh, keeping this updated and making sure that we're up to speed as far as our city's concerned and the needs. So this might be something we want to do on a regular basis, but, um, I appreciate that question. Yeah. Well, thank you. All right. Uh, any more questions pertaining to Taylor? Okay. Uh, I'll let Joe go first and then I'll take you to Denise.
Uh, real quick, this to answer the, uh, the House Bill two thousand, two zero zero three, with the one that she's talking about requires for any cities of population above ten thousand. And I, I went and found it real quick while she was talking about it. So, uh, we wouldn't fall under that requirement, but it still has some good information in there that we can look at following. So, and I'll send this, uh, PDF out that they, that I found, so.
Thank you, Joe. Thank you, Joe. Um, any other questions? Uh, Denise, yeah, that's right.
I don't have a question, but I wanted to add because I, it just, I, I was reading through my notes and it's back to the T S P. Another thing that we're doing is we've had some requests around town about speed humps and speed bumps. And it really comes down to you need to have a criteria to allow speed humps. And it's all based on, information that the experts know more. So that will also be a section in our new T S P on criteria. So if some neighborhood wants to come in and ask for a speed hump, we'll have the criteria there to be able to base it on and, and do that. So that's another key part of our new T S P. I just wanted to bring that up.
Okay, thank you. Um, Paul?
On the H N A, given that we're going to be a, a year to a year and a half out on, on any, uh, results from that, what can we do concurrently? I mean, or should we be doing things concurrently? Um, is that stuff that we should be talking about in our, our goal section coming up? Yeah, i- is there anything concrete, the action steps that we can take? Because we know that, that we have a need for, uh, for multi, uh, family housing out here. You know, so I guess that's, that's question one. Question two, over the past week with the stuff that we had going on, a lot of terms were thrown out that I was not familiar with as well too. I think it'd be helpful to have an education session, uh, for us all to get up to speed on, on, uh, what, what the terms are out there. Things that we should be thinking about, what we have, what we don't have, uh, things along those lines as well too. So I guess that's, that's part two. But part one was what can we be doing i- in the time being?
Thank you, Paul.
Well, in terms of, um, sort of what data can we be looking at? Or maybe relying on in decision making, um, that twenty nineteen housing memo is, is the best thing that we have in term that can kind of, it's our, it's our best guess at what our housing needs are probably going to look like in the next twenty years. And so that's certainly something that we can, um, use when making decisions. It's the best thing that we've got. That's, it's the closest thing that we have to a housing needs analysis for sure. Um, and then I think the, um, what's it, what's it called? Committee on Housing Affordability and Diversity that I think Matt's going to talk about in a minute. Is probably our shorter term, um, yeah, tool, tool for educating ourselves and, um, strategizing about what can we do, um, to address those needs that we know that we have for more diverse types and maybe denser and more affordable types of housing in the shorter term.
Also use the information we got from the county study when we did our new zonings that were approved that Taylor referred to at the start of the talk. And we use those to, um, we, we knew, we said, we could see from that where our shortages were and what type of housing. And that's why those new zones were created with a specific criteria that they have about, um, promoting, uh, more multifamily housing in certain areas of town.
Hey, thank you. Uh, any other questions pertaining to this still on the table? Uh, Joel?
So actually, this question is going back to what she mentioned about the speed bumps, because that was one of the things out of my list here. Uh, are you, were you saying Denise that, uh, until we adopt something in there that we can't, the, the neighborhoods can't request speed bumps?
We really need to have criteria and all my research that I've been doing the last couple of months, the cities say you need to have set criteria. So you can be, you know, how, how you're making that decision. What kind of roads is it on? You know, is it only on neighborhood roads? And the fire department has a lot to do to it, needs a lot of input on that too. So, yeah, we're working on that criteria. And, you know, that might be get done a little bit earlier than some of the other things. And we can go ahead and at least, you know, start, um, maybe talking to some neighborhoods about it if we can see what the potential is there.
All right, sounds good. Yeah, all, I've got a few people that have requested the information from me about that. So, all in all, no, thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Uh, any other questions before we move on? No? Okay. Taylor, we thank you very much. That was very intuitive, a lot of information. What else? Do you have anything else you want to add? Before we move on to Matt?
That's it from me. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We appreciate you. Uh, Matt Lorenzen, you were open.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, so before I jump into some other topics, I guess I first wanted to just see, um, what questions, if any, there were about the report I provided. And I actually wanted to add a few asterisks to it, uh, you know, in, inevitably things get forgotten or left out. And I just had a couple of things to, um, add. But any questions? Comments or otherwise about the report I provided?
Are there any questions for Matt? Moving ahead, uh, from the email he sent out. I know you've all had a chance to peruse that. Okay, no, I think, Matt, that everybody's comfortable?
Really, it, it's a stupid question. Um, it really, it, it's a stupid question, but I, I'm, I'm gonna ask it anyways. Did we ever learn why the both food carts are suddenly departing Estacada and going to Oregon City? I was just kind of curious if they shared with you.
They, they, they both did it because they're gonna make more money out there.
And did they ever express that maybe, or did they ever express to you if there was anything that we as a city could have done to help them be more successful here?
No, I'm al- I, I've only heard from one though because I'm, I know her from my daughter. She's best friends with my daughter. But no, it wasn't anything to do with Estacada, it was just the opportunity to make some more, make it better.
So from what I understand, don't we have more food carts moving in, uh, to replace? I think I've heard of two new ones that are coming in. Um, there might be more.
For at least one, but I'm not sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, I actually, I also talked to that one food cart that was selling those yummy sandwiches and there was, there was the same reason. It was nothing that Estacada did, it was just more volume of business.
Well, so I guess my concern though is that, um, if that is the reason why both of the food carts left Estacada and went to Oregon City, my fear is that if we are getting new food carts to replace them, that they're gonna ultimately make the same decision in the future because they're, they're business people too. I, I mean, essentially if we have food carts moving into Estacada, learning that they can be more successful somewhere else and then leaving to go to that somewhere else, I guess I'm just really nervous that that might be the future of all food carts here.
Could be a, a good starting ground though for food carts. So it might be something kind of unique for Estacada where we get a bunch of different food carts in every once in a while.
Yeah, yeah, it stirs up a little bit.
Don't get too attached.
Um, yeah, actually Katie brought up a to- topic out of my list again too, about the food carts. Um, so one of the things I wanted to see what the, I already thought was about, um, putting it together a city-sponsored location for food carts to come to that they have resources that. Uh, it'll cover a few, uh, of the, uh, areas such as, um, some of the businesses downtown have been concerned about food carts coming in, taking business from them, not paying their fair share of taxes and so on. Uh, by having a place that the city has put together, um, that we, you know, build them for their space, build them for their water usage and so on, that would kind of make sure that they're, A, they're paying for their fair share and that would eliminate that concern. Plus it allows us to put our food carts in one location so people can see them all at one time. And Portland's had really good success with this. Um, we have a spot near downtown that'd be a great area, which is that big open field that's kind of near the fire department, uh, where they did that, uh, where they did the, uh, oh, what's it called? The, the little food giveaway to the firefighters area there. I mean, it's a big area that we could, they could run water to, they could run power to, they could park a whole bunch of carts, put a big seating area for people to sit in and attract people in. And, um, you know, something that we could, you know, use it for a place to kind of more regulate, help them control and attract new carts in, cause it's a nice place to sit at. Plus, you know, like I said, it might be a good balance for the businesses that are concerned about food cart versus restaurant downtown. So I just wanna see what everybody's kind of thought about that, if anyone else has had the same idea or something.
Okay, uh, I'll, I'll hit Matt first and then I'll hit, uh, Paul, if that's okay?
I, I guess, uh, I like that idea. Um, I'd be surprised if anyone didn't like that idea, but the challenge that you face is who's gonna pay for all those improvements that you just mentioned? Uh, carts in the city are required to be on a paved surface, so then we're talking about pavement and then it's owned by the fire department and so they would need to sign off on it.
I thought we own that as a city.
We don't, unfortunately.
No, okay, so, yeah, I was under the impression that we, they gave it back to us a little while ago.
Yeah, we're, we're trying to move them in that direction, but they ultimately make the decision over it. But yeah, I have emails out to them and to Ken Oliver to try and suggest that they give it back. But, uh, yeah.
Okay, do we have other land in the city that's in right near downtown that would be fit if that one wasn't an option?
Well, Joel, do you have any city that does do that? I mean, I know, I know of a lot of pods, but they're individual bus- they're people that own the property. I don't know of any city that is in the business of, you know, and I just, I think that, I know that our staff doesn't have time to be in the business of, uh...
And it may not be something where the city, it may not have to be something where the city itself is the one that runs a long-term. We could look at it as an option like we did with the, uh, the building down there where the sweet treats are.
Yeah, so, so definitely, um, if a property owner comes to us and wants to put in a pod there, we have all the regulations in our code already and we can work with that person. In fact, we have had someone come in asking about that, so it might happen soon. But I think it would have to be a private person that come in, but then we would definitely work with them to get everything set up for that. And, uh, yeah, I mean, I think everyone would love to have a pod of food carts in town other than, other than maybe the other restaurants, so.
Like that, Paul?
I, I was just, actually, you guys hit most of it there. The, the folks that left us went because there's a pod, a developer put together a pod in Oregon City where I think it was the Spicer, Spicer Market, is that what it is?
Yeah, that's what it is.
Where that used to be. So that's, that's now, they've turned that into a food cart pod. So we left for that, but part of that in chatting with, uh, with some folks, um, they're aware that we've got the limitation of two food carts per tax lot. But my understanding is that, that that's just granted, that we allow two per tax lot, but we could allow more if they came to us, uh, to seek that development. So I think that word needs to get out there, that it's not, uh, not set in stone, but something that, that we're willing to work with people on, it's built in our system that way.
Thank you, Paul, that's good, that's good information. Um, anybody else on this particular issue? Okay, Matt, I'm gonna hand it back, both, Melanie?
Just a quick note, a positive note, I was getting some lunch up at the teriyaki place and he loves us and he felt, and even in spite of the schools being closed and no softball or soccer, you know, where he would be just have so much traffic to go there. He said he, he makes good money here, whereas in, he goes, when I was in Sandy, um, people liked fast food too much there. And I can see, you know, it's easier to drive through a drive-up window than go to the, the pod of food carts. Um, but anyway, that was, he does feel very positive about being here. Um, so, but I, I don't know if he had a more, you know, if he got invited to come to Oregon City, maybe he would go to. I don't know, but he's pretty happy and he likes, he likes our community and feels that we like him, which made me happy.
Good, thank you, Melanie, that was inspiring, we appreciate that. Uh, Matt, I'm gonna turn it back over to you.
Okay, um, you know, and this is speculating or maybe just, uh, too much optimism, but I think there's a possibility that we may see the waffle cart back in Estacada one day. Um, you know, being in a pod has its advantages, but then you also face more competition. Uh, so, um, she knows the market in Estacada and if she does a B test right now and finds it to be the same or, or, or worse than how she's doing here, then maybe, maybe she comes back. I don't know, it's just, uh, just a thought I had.
Yep.
Um, but Justin's also, uh, on to something there as well. I think seeing some regular turnover and having the sites that we do have ready for food carts acting as little business incubators, um, is, is not a bad thing. And hopefully some of those will spin into, uh, brick and mortars either here in town or potentially elsewhere. But, uh, having a home in Estacada is a still bragging rights.
Yeah, Joel, you have a question real quick?
Uh, yeah, do we have any incentives or anything that we try to work with the carts to try to turn them from the carts into a brick and mortar to kind of keep more permanent in the, in the town? Do we have any sort of, uh, incentives or programs or anything like that?
Uh, we don't, other than our urban renewal programming. So if someone wanted to take a vacant space and get grant funds to help them convert it to a restaurant, uh, that would be very relevant and...
Is there, is there anything like that the other cities may have done or something to try to turn temporary food carts into more permanent businesses?
Uh, there are probably examples out there, I don't know any off the top of my head.
Yeah, I'd be curious to see if that's something that people have done that we may be able to try to keep them here long-term by, cause I think once they set into a, an actual brick and mortar, then obviously they're not gonna roll for the potential profit might be higher at, so.
Good, thanks.
Um, okay, so, uh, thanks for the food cart discussion. I guess the asterisks that I wanted to add to my report, I'll be pretty quick on them. Uh, as a result of COVID restrictions and also just sort of a general desire to move into the digital age, uh, one of the things I didn't put in my report, but that I really should have is, um, I did a considerable amount of work in the last quarter of two thousand and twenty in, um, getting the city up and running on this platform called CityGrows that we've been using now for online applications for business licenses, business license renewals, building permits, and we're slowly bringing other processes in, under that, uh, digital platform as well. We used CityGrows to roll out both of our grant programs, both the one directed toward residents as well as businesses. So, um, just wanted to add that. Uh, we also last year added a e-commerce overlay in our enterprise zone. Um, I guess time may not allow to discuss enterprise zones thoroughly here, but it's one incentive program we have, uh, in our industrial lands, uh, to promote, uh, business development. And we added an e-commerce overlay there, so that is, uh, makes that incentive available not just to manufacturers, but also to technology-related businesses. Uh, we, we're, we're thinking specifically about a data center there. I don't think an industrial campus filled with data centers is what we're trying to achieve. That would certainly not be my goal, but having a data center in the campus would be, I think, a good, um, a good addition to the mix. Um, the assessed values are high, which means tax revenues are high per acre. Um, and, um, anyway, you, you, it, it, depending on whose data center it was, chances are it would not be from one of the, uh, big tech companies, but probably something smaller scale. Uh, they tend to contribute a lot towards the communities they end up in as well. So, um, there are, there are some advantages to having a data center, but again, we wouldn't be aiming at filling the park with, uh, data centers because they're low, low on jobs, high on assessed values, there's a trade-off there. Um, finally, the last asterisk or two under new business starts. Um, I left out McKenzie CNC. Uh, that business moved from the Clackamas area into our industrial campus. They occupy one of Paul Miller's buildings, which is on the, uh, oh, what direction is that? The south extension of Campus Drive headed towards Al Ratamaker's, um, property there at, uh, Estacada Park. Uh, that's about fifteen jobs and then, um, rapid RV repairs in that same development, just a couple of jobs there, but, uh, nonetheless, an interesting business to move in and might complement the potential, um, RV campground that's, uh, being considered. So, um, those were just a few additions to the report. Um, the things that, uh, Denise asked me to touch on were the vertical housing development zone, which is relevant to the urban renewal application y'all are considering to spend a moment talking about the, uh, Housing Affordability and Diversity Committee and about the business survey that we sent out. So I'll try and be brief on each of those. Um, my research on incentives that we might be able to use to leverage our urban renewal money has been, um, useful, but the conclusion that I've come to is that, uh, very few options are, have a, a, a quick turn time and would actually be relevant to Estacada. There are a few of them besides the vertical housing development zone. So we talked about employer-assisted housing, for example. Um, as far as my research showed, that wasn't really like a concrete program per se, but more of a concept that a local employer would, um, get involved with a development project, um, either in the form of an injection of equity or to be a, uh, hold a debt position, to be involved with it in some other ways as, as, as like a trade-off for having a few of those, um, units, uh, specifically for their employees. We certainly can put feelers out, eh, among our larger employers and see if there's any interest. Um, nothing, uh, there's nothing harmful about that. I, I will be surprised if we get any bites on that, but it doesn't hurt to put the feelers out there and see what we get. Um, but vertical housing development zone, the turn time on it can be pretty quick, quick enough for this project anyway. Um, it used to be a state program with a state program manager, but they have spun it off and put it into the hands of local jurisdictions. So that's a double-edged sword. It means more work for us, but it does mean that we are, we don't have to be waiting for the state to do something on their end. So it's, uh, it's similar to our enterprise zone in that the process looks fairly similar. You gather some data, you define a legal area to designate. In our situation, it would be pretty simple because we could just align it with our urban renewal area and use the same exact boundaries. That would be our downtown zone and probably the area we would wanna focus. If we wanna add to it in the future, we can certainly do that and, and designate an uptown area as a vertical housing development zone as well. But the reason why I say it's similar to the enterprise zone is that the process is similar. So again, you designate the boundaries, you have to notify other taxing districts. So the city is not the only one that forgoes revenue by abating the taxes for this ten-year period. All the, all the taxes, uh, taxing districts that get revenues from property taxes, uh, would be impacted. And so they have to be noticed and given the opportunity to opt in or opt out. Or they're automatically opting in if we move forward, but they do have the option and have to receive clear instructions on how they would opt out. Um, so, uh, no sooner than sixty days after we notice those districts, we could pass a resolution locally and enact this vertical housing development zone. So it could move, you know, pretty quickly. Um, I misspoke, I think the last time we touched on this, it's not a full abatement of the taxes. What it does offer is a twenty percent reduction per floor. And in this situation, or in any situation, the ground floor doesn't count because the ground floor has to be designated at least fifty percent toward commercial use. That's part of the vertical housing program. So in this case, uh, there would be one eligible floor, the second floor, and that would get the developer a twenty percent reduction. So if we figure their tax bill is probably gonna be ten to twelve thousand dollars a year, my rough estimate, uh, you know, so that amounts to two thousand to twenty-five hundred dollars a year in tax savings across ten years. It's a twenty to twenty-five thousand dollar contribution toward the project. So it's not necessarily, I don't think, a deal maker or breaker, but it does, it, it, it can be something that we factor and discuss as a potential funding source that changes the developer's, um, rate of return, which therefore should impact how much grant money they need. So in other words, there should be a direct line we can draw between this vertical housing benefit and the money that urban renewal ends up contributing.
Okay, great, thank you, Matt. Any questions for Matt on this particular subject? Paul?
Uh, it said taxes, is that state taxes, city taxes, um, what, what are the taxes?
Uh, property taxes.
Property, s- from, from the county then?
Yeah, the county assessor, yeah, is the one who would take care of all the calculations. We have to notify them as soon as we establish this district and then it gets reflected in their tax bill.
Okay, and is there a timeframe on that, like a certain number of years that they get that twenty percent per floor?
It's a ten-year abatement.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, any other questions to Matt on this particular subject? No? Okay, Matt, next you have the Chad.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, quickly on the Chad, um, in the latter portion of last year, we kind of suspended that because y'all were waiting for new council members and here we are. Um, one of the concerns that was raised was the membership of the, uh, committee that was recommended by staff, um, specifically that there were members that were, um, not local to Estacada. And then secondly, that some of the particip- proposed participants were also participating on similar committees at the county level. Um, so I guess we can have an open discussion on this topic. Uh, I'll just, before we do that, quickly say, uh, my two cents. Um, I think for some of the more, uh, I don't know if obscure is the right word to use, but, uh, for example, a nonprofit developer of multifamily housing, um, maybe one of those folks lives in the Estacada area, but I don't know of any. And so that's kind of why we started reaching out to other firms that were active in the county, say, but not necessarily with direct ties to Estacada. And then as far as membership, being participants in similar committees in the county, I guess I personally just don't see that as problematic. I don't see what the conflict of interest would be, but, um, that's just my take on it. And so if you all wanna give me some direction on how to move the Chad forward, I will take that and run with it.
Hey, Joel, you have your hand up?
Yeah. So one of the things when I was looking at this that I was thinking that would be, should be considered or could be considered is if we don't have somebody that fits some of these requirements into the, in our city that we consider just missing that requirement and then put someone else in the position that's in our city that can still give input. They don't, we know, we maybe we make that an optional or best practice requirement to bring that in. But we don't make it a solid, it has to be someone that fits this bill. This is our, would be our best case scenario. We found someone to fit this bill within our city. But if we don't, then we bring someone in who has the next best, next, next best option. So that, that's something that we could definitely, I think we should be talking about, looking at is because I think it's so critically important that we keep people in Esti Cada on this committee because they're going to be focused on Esti Cada because they got a personal connection to here and they want to see what's going well in their city. But when you take someone out of the, out of the city and you put someone from a different part of the county, they lose that personal connection in many ways. And at that point they become, they, they, they don't make decisions that may or may not be as critical and in the best interest of Esti Cada. So I just think it better having that personal connection to it, it has equipped a heavier burden and influence on them to make sure that they, they make those, their best calls and do their extra, you know, research and put their Ps and Qs in there in place. So.
Okay. And then I've got Katie and I've got Jerry. So Katie, you go first and then Jerry.
Um, I want to say that I'm the one who originally raised the, the concern about the fact that one third of the proposed member roster was all, had already served on a committee addressing housing affordability. That being said, after some serious and after some very serious consideration, that is no longer a concern that I have, and I appreciate the redundancy. I also appreciate having people who are qualified and knowledgeable and experts in their field, helping us address this issue instead of leaving it up to the hands of a bunch of people who might say, not in my backyard. I would, I appreciate the fact that people who know what they're talking about might be the ones having this conversation. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Hey, Jerry.
I'm, I'm basically saying what Katie said. I would rather have the people that, you know, I would rather have people in these positions that are educated and know what they're doing rather than take a, you know, less qualified person just because they're local. I do understand the, you know, the, the local concern, but we do have a pretty good number of locals on there, a pretty good representation of Esti Cada locals on that, on the proposed committee. So I would, I wouldn't change it. I, I like the committee, the way that it sits reading through this. You know, like I said, there's plenty of reputation, representation from Esti Cada. I, I think it's good. So.
Okay. Matt will hit you first and then Joel.
Okay. Yeah. I'll just quickly say, yeah, we can go whichever direction on this you'd like. But I just wanted to quickly chime in and remind the group that this committee is really only forming recommendations. And then you all, the council who are a hundred percent local make the call on whether to accept or modify those recommendations or reject them completely. So I like the idea of having a, a, a team of experts put together a policy package that makes sense to them and then see if it also makes sense to the local constituents who are represented by the council.
Thank you, Matt. Joel?
And I, I get Katie and Jerry's point of having people that are experts. But it's not that hard to, if you have a specific question that might retain to an expert to go and ask them. I think the, there's no one better than an expert that lives in the city to know what kind of needs and what kind of desires they'd want to have in there. How much more of an expert would you need someone to make a recommendation of what they, they're, they need in their own backyard? And there's, I think there's a general consensus to think that someone's going to go, oh, not in my backyard and everybody that sits on this, on this committee here, that they won't do the work to actually learn about whatever the issues on the table is and get that information and make a good effort. I think there's a, there's an assumption that that wasn't going to happen. But I think it's, it's just as much as anyone else can, as much of like I learn about things going on in our city. Sitting on here, I do my research for this, for the council, someone could be sitting on that committee. But they have that personal drive to make sure that they look forward on what's going to be happening in their city and that they understand that the culture, the, the, the people and the longevity that they'd like to see in their city as well versus someone who doesn't have that attachment. That might make a decision that's more cold or specific to what a standard might be or what everybody else is doing in the area, just like any other town. Ours is unique. And so it takes a very specific, unique perspective. So.
Joel, Jerry, you have your hand up?
Again, you know, like Matt said, the, these people are just going to be making recommendations. We're going to be making the ultimate decision. Us as a council. So I, again, I personally would rather have people, the experts in the field on the committee making these, just you're making these recommendations than, you know, than, you know, my neighbor who's an electrician. You know, I'd rather, I'd rather have somebody in that, you know, housing field that fits these qualifications. You know, make these decisions or make these recommendations for us to make the decision. So.
Thank you, Jerry. Paul?
I just want to agree with what Jerry was saying there as well, too. I think from my standpoint, I think the list was well crafted. And I appreciate what Joel's saying there, but I'd also love to see whatever we could do to get this moving as quickly as possible, too.
Okay. Thank you. And Matt, I'll bring it back to you.
I, I'll, I'll probably give it to you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Just in asking for what the consensus and direction, clear direction is to staff.
So if we could get consensus to go, I know that Joel has some reservations, but do we have consensus to bring it back as proposed for council approval at the next meeting?
Looks like you've got, is everybody on board with that?
Okay.
I'm good.
Charity?
So we're just, we're not vote, are we, are we deciding that this is like these people, these nine individuals are going to be the committee? Are we doing that now? Or this, is this to just table it until the next?
You'll, you'll do it at your next meeting.
Okay. So consensus as we bring it back to the council. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Matt.
Okay. And then finally, if I can share my screen, I'm going to try. How's that for everyone?
Yep. You see that real nice and clear?
So this is, we got 20 responses to the survey that I sent out to my readership for the economic development newsletter. I'll just quickly spin through and show you a few trends. These are the businesses that responded and I feel like we actually accidentally got a very good representation across the local economy. You can see the names there, everything spanning from manufacturing to food service to an Airbnb brewery, retail, healthcare, professional services. So really a pretty diverse mix of responses. There's just some graphics that demonstrate the responses. Have you been negatively impacted? 80% yes. What type of impacts? Most predictable responses layoffs and reduction in revenue and profits. A few other sort of random ones that people added in on their own. If your business had to lay off, have you been able to rehire? So fortunately, some have been able to rehire while others haven't. Others didn't have to lay off at all. You can see how much they feel like their revenue and profit. I guess it might not have been a perfect survey question to lump revenue and profits in together because obviously those are two very different things. But we were trying to keep this survey brief. So this at least gives us a feel to what degree they were impacted, but I imagine it was hard for them to answer a question about revenue and profits lumped together as if they were the same. This section I feel like is somewhat promising. Have you applied for loans and grants? Many have. And then the more promising is that over 80%, excuse me, just under 80% have been funded through those programs. With the exception of the EIDL, emergency injury disaster loan, which is also an SBA program similar to PPP. There's a grant component to it, but it is a loan. It's not forgivable the way the PPP program was. So it looks like a minority of recipients used that program. Most are getting grants or PPP, which is in most all cases effectively a grant once they submit the proper paperwork to show that they spent their loan proceeds appropriately. This is the trickier one. The question that was asked, how much additional revenue would your business need monthly in order for you to feel confident your business would not be forced to close in the next six months? Please stay an absolute minimum. And of course, you know, that question, that response is going to be very different for very different businesses, but you've got a range here. Someone's saying that they needed $80,000 per month down to someone who says, we're doing just fine. So pretty broad spectrum there. I think the takeaway though, is that even if you were to look at, you know, like the median or mode of these responses, you get something in the range of a couple thousand dollars a month across six months, which I, I, I put that timeline on it because I think that hopefully by the summertime, we'll start seeing some return to a degree of normalcy in the economy. So 2,000 bucks a month across over six months, you know, it's 10 grand per business. I don't mean to sound like we should sit on our hands and do nothing, but it's going to be very difficult to move the needle in any meaningful way for a large number of businesses. It's just something we have to accept to a degree. And then they had a free for all section where they could provide input. So I can package this up and send it to you to review in more detail, but those are just some basic trends that we got.
Sure. Well, that looks really good. I was, I used to see that they liked the $2,000 grant that we were able to put out there. Did you get a lot of takers on that particular grant?
Yeah. So we, we put it out to all 13 brick and mortar restaurant and beverage service companies, businesses in the city. And all 13 did go ahead and apply and receive the grant. There are two businesses that have not yet submitted paperwork that the city needs in terms of, they need to give us a W9 as well as evidence of current registration with the Oregon Secretary of State. Two out of the 13 have so far failed to get us that information, but we're, we're nagging them and we will get it.
Well, good. Good. Well, we thank staff. That was a wonderful thing you did. And it's really worked out well. And I heard a lot of good things. So I appreciate everything that you've done.
Appreciative. And I, I wouldn't say that I did that. I would say that you all did that and we just clicked a few buttons and made it happen. So.
Good. Thank you. Again, that was great. I can't see any hands because I can't see the screen. So can we return back to the?
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought I hit stop. Apparently I didn't.
Okay. Got a couple. Okay. Let's start off with you, Katie.
Thank you, Matt. I love it. I would love it if we could package it up and I could get a copy. I would love to read some of the comments individually. I'd love to maybe dig into that a little bit more and really have some time spent on it. So thank you for doing that. Really, truly. Thank you.
Sure. I'll, I'll send it tomorrow.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions for Matt on this? Not seeing any. So Matt, do you have anything else you'd like to contribute or are you about finished with yours?
Yeah, I think I used up my fair share of time, so I'll stop now. I, I had intended to maybe talk about what the next year looks like, but I think we got a pretty good picture of, of what is ahead. And to be honest, it's a little bit difficult to plan too far in advance right now with everything shifting the way it is. So I'll just thank you for your time. And if there's any other questions, please give me a call or email me or, you know, we can schedule a one on one.
Thank you, Matt. That was done very well. I appreciate that. City staff have anything that they'd like to add in at this time?
Nope. I think we're ready for another 15 minute break and then we can finish up.
All right. Great. Jerry, you have something you want to add in before we head out to break?
Yeah. So going back to, and I'm sorry to beat a dead horse. I know we decided we're going to talk where it is going forward to council, but the Chad committee. So after conversations with another counselor the other night, I started doing, I started looking at like multi-family home developers around. And so Dave Carbono from Home First Development, I, I started reading a little bit about him and it's awesome that he's applied or that he wants to be part of our committee. What he's done for the, like the elderly committee or elderly community in some locations is, is truly remarkable. I mean, when you can, they're on fixed incomes that these, you know, people are able to rent apartments in some of the facilities that he's built. So just, you know, maybe take a little bit of time and look at the, look at the, what for? Four people that are not from Esti Cada, five maybe that are not from Esti Cada that are on this. Just, you know, I, I didn't even realize that it was the same guy till I started rereading this. But you know, they're, I think they're really going to be good, especially Dave. I think he's going to be really good for this committee. So thank you guys.
Okay. Thank you, Jerry. Joel, you want to add something in before we go to break?
Yep. And I, I will definitely go through and do a deeper background on those things. It's a good suggestion. One of the things I did forget to bring up that I had concerns about, and I think this was my biggest of all concerns on here is it says Jill Smith or delegate or Ryan Carpenter or delegate. I don't think our delegate should ever be on there because as a council, for, before picking somebody to be on there, we're selecting somebody very specific for their skills or something else like that. So I think it should be identified who that person's going to be. And if they can't make it, then we need to find out who they would delegate and then decide that as a council, if that's going to be the person we want to be there to, to put in that, that information. So.
I can, can I ask a question then? If we changed Jill Smith or delegate to Housing Authority of Clackamas County, would that make you feel better?
Potentially, but I don't know if we should put an agency in there. If we should actually just pick a specific.
Smith is the director of the housing.
I know, I know she is.
Okay. Yeah. So that's why, or delegate is there because she's a very important and very busy woman.
Yeah, I get that. So I just think, and I think in having someone to know that their actual credentials behind it would be important. So and not just, you know, have someone to second, render secretary show up in there without their credentials to be giving input that we're going to maybe be making big decisions on and using those recommendations for. I think that's what's important is to know who's actually giving us the recommendations and understand the background that comes with those. If we're going to be relying on that heavily to move forward. That's, that's all I'm concerned about is.
And that's a fair, and that's a fair worry. I could see where that would come into play. Matt, go ahead.
Perhaps a good middle ground would be to ask Jill and ask Ryan, hey, if you weren't able to make a meeting, which staff person would you send in your absence? And then we can put instead of delegate, we can put Jill Smith or Richard Swift.
That's, that's a good middle ground for me.
Or sorry, go ahead. Sorry.
That's a good middle ground for me. So.
Great.
Okay. Good. Good. All right. Is there anything else you'd like to add before we get out of this break?
Tidbit, Matt, did you see Richard Smith resign? Richard Swift?
He resigned?
Yeah, he did.
Yes.
February 4th.
But the climate isn't what he wants to sit with. So he has resigned. Yeah.
What, what climate? Just.
Don't read the article. Call up, call up the article.
Okay.
Okay.
So should we break till, let's come back at four o'clock?
Sounds good. Four o'clock it is.
Okay.
Thank you, guys. All right. Got everybody back on board? All right. We are now looking at goal setting and workshop development. So let staff direct this one. What are we exactly looking for at this point?
So we're going to look at the goals. Oops. Let me get, get out of here. So the, I'm just going to kind of go down. I know we've already talked about things that obviously we're going to put in the goals for next year, but there are some areas we haven't discussed. So in going down the first develop the vibrant downtown, a lot of those things has been done. The developed strategies for redeveloping the mill site, that really can't be done until we have a developer. But one thing that we have done is we have rezoned that area with. rezoned that area with very, with very good requirements that there has to be a master plan and so many acres developed at a time because we really want to see that area develop in a certain way. And one of those things is daylighting the stream like we talked about earlier. So even though we haven't communicate, we, I'll take it back. Matt has talked to the property owner a couple of times, but really nothing to do with developing the site. It's mostly been for other reasons. But we're ready when there is someone that comes in and is interested in that property. I think we are ready for them and have in place the vision of that area. So you counsel for doing that in that, those zone changes. We haven't been able, a lot of these things have to do with developing and promoting downtown events. As you guys all know with COVID, this last year, we didn't get to have a lot of our events. So we're hoping this, this year we can turn that around and hopefully by the summer have some of our, our things. A lot of the strategy, such developed strategy to address commercial properties, both vacant and occupied. You can kind of look at Matt's report and showed what we have done in that area, all the new businesses and the buildings that we have spent a lot of urban renewal dollars on to help do that, you know, to address those properties that were vacant or needed to be changed. Some of the things like provide the downtown map with businesses, murals, et cetera. Matt has done that. It just isn't widely distributed because of, again, we haven't had a lot of people downtown. And I, I guess on the implement the parking strategy, I would like the council to discuss that. I'm not quite sure what, what that means or what staff needs to do on that. And we did, you know, of course pave our parking lot for more parking for downtown events. And with the more multifamily that might be occurring in the downtown core with the parking requirements are kind of eased up in that downtown area, that parking lot might also provide parking for that type of overload parking of people visiting people that live downtown as those develop. And then to create an accessible community, we've done a lot of work on our active transportation plan where we've tried to make connections and with the school and working with the school to make connections, especially around the school areas and between our parks where it's better for pedestrians, kind of gaps in the sidewalk system. So we've done two or three projects this year for that. And the Culver probable Culver project that we talked about earlier will also help provide that because there are not sidewalks on the east side of Wade Street right now. So we'll be constructing some more of those. The bus service options to Clackamas Community College. I did attend a couple Triment things. Triment is starting to discuss possibly a bus between Estacada and Oregon City on the back way instead of making people that go to Clackamas Community College go all the way into town and then hop on another bus. But it isn't on their list of priorities yet. But they have been having meetings with the Redland area, Redland Viola CROs to talk about. So at least it's on their radar now and maybe they'll get more serious about that. We haven't done a sidewalk inventory yet or the sidewalk repair program, but I do want to, I think we did put some money in for that, but we didn't really advertise it. So, and what that is, is people are responsible for putting sidewalks in, in front of their houses. And there are a lot of parts in the, the older parts of town that don't have sidewalks. And it's kind of to encourage those property owners that if we could have a fund where we could pay for half of that so they could possibly pay for the other half. And that would enhance our pedestrian movement around town. So that's something we need to work on. The improvement promote community assets is mostly stuff to do with our infrastructure, which we've talked a lot about that. And so we'll of course be, be putting in those things that we discussed earlier. And when, when I get done with this, then we'll start talking about things that you guys want to see in this next year's or in this year's goals. And then provide the economic vitality. That again is developing web-based property databases. That's been done for our property. Continue the urban renewal districts and the enterprise zone. That has been done. We are in the process of updating boundaries to the enterprise zone since we had so those zone changes. Promote newly formed commercial and industrial zones. Matt is constantly talking to people about those. Identify city process that can be streamlined to avoid unnecessary delays and costs to new businesses and business growth. And we feel like that the city grows that Matt has been working on really helps out with that. We want to work with the Chamber of Commerce when COVID gets done for a plan for the downtown and raising awareness of the resources available and our strengths and getting that word out there for economic development. And then provide self-haithy and equitable community. We've done a lot of those things, the CET tax, hopefully we can get back to with this Chad Committee form. That's something that I think could really improve our chances on getting someone in here to build those multifamily units that we so desperately need. It would be an incentive that would be really does have for that. And then promote the Neighborhood Watch Program. We have talked to the lady at the Sheriff's Office for Community Watch. And I think we decided we would try to set up a couple of meetings and let people know how to set up a Neighborhood Watch. So in a couple of council, we might do that in a workshop or just a town hall setting. Anyway, that's a brief overview. If you guys, we can have questions about this or we can just start in on what you want to see. This is the best time to do it because we're just developing our budget. So all those things that we want to try to get in there, we want to hear, we want to hear what you guys want to see us doing this year.
All right.
I got my pad and pencil ready.
Okay, so I'm going to just start off. I'll call some people. Katie, I'm going to start with you because you got your hand up there.
So I just wanted to add a couple of things or maybe put in some redundancies. I realized that affordable housing is already in our goals in like look down toward the bottom. But I actually was really kind of thinking that under the develop a vibrant downtown, we could add a goal that is essentially trying to reduce the bedroom community statistic that we have. Right now, we have a large number of people that are commuting out of Estacada for work. And I believe based on my own experiences and, and, and the people that I have talked to, one of the greatest ways that we can read, that we can have a vibrant downtown is to have more people that live and work in Estacada. The less time people spend commuting between their home and their work equals more time that they spend downtown in their own cities, whether that be dining out or shopping or whatnot. So I would really like to see us add some sort of a goal that, that really shows that we're focusing on trying to increase the work opportunities that are here for the people who live here while also increasing the housing opportunities for the people that work here already. So it's kind of a, you know, double edged sword on that one where, you know, I would like us to add a goal that says we want to increase job opportunities for people who live here while also increasing housing opportunities for the people that already work here. So I would love to add that. Down to create an accessible community. I'd really like to add parks there. I think everybody knows about the, the most recent park play structure that was approved and some of my own personal trepidations to the park structure. That being said, I would really like to see our parks taking steps or really trying to be more inclusive for any children who might have some disability, maybe they're in a wheelchair or maybe they even have some vision impairment or hearing impairment. You know, there are, there are definitely some ways that I think our Parks Committee and our Parks Department can be a little bit more inclusive than they are. And I would love to see that be a new goal and for us to work toward that goal. Really, those are the main ones I had. And then the last one is under partnerships. I see that we've got a lot of really important people listed in our partnerships, but I would like to add to that list of partnerships. I think that we as a city should be, should have a closer relationship with the Board of County Commissioners and Clackamas County as a whole, especially since during the wildfire, we were so reliant on the county and the county services and the county leadership. And I feel like had we had a stronger partnership with the Board of County Commissioners or Clackamas County as a whole, that I would not have felt so shut out of that entire event that we went through if we had had that stronger partnership in place, which is saying something because I, I am relatively close to at least the majority of the Board of Clackamas County Commissioners, especially the board that was present at the time of the fire. So, you know, that kind of adds to my disappointment of exactly how much we relied on them and were kind of shut out by, I mean, someone, someone closed the door somewhere between the city of Estacada and Clackamas County. So I would really like to see one of our goals being to really foster that partnership, really build on that partnership since we obviously rely on them for so many things. So that's what I wanted to say about these goals and I appreciate you guys.
Questions?
Thank you, Katie. Joel, you had your hand up?
Yeah, I got a, I got a variety of things. Let me just make a quick note here. So along the line of partnerships, since, since Katie just, just had touched on that, I think it also would be really good for the city to look at and consider some partnerships with the local nonprofits such as the Food Bank, Yellow House and those capital areas as well because they do serve a large portion of the, of the, those who are, especially this last year, who they're struggling in our town with, with supplies and stuff. So I think would be good for the city to partner much better with, with our nonprofits in the area and try to find ways that we can try to support and help them. So other things that I'd like to kind of see possibly added to our goals would be one I brought up in my first time would be the look at getting the mayoral term limits onto the, the next election for this year to have the city decide what they'd like to do with that. When I say the city, I mean the community, that the people out there vote on it. Also would like to see some of the ordinances that were brought up to try to either have those come to fruition such as ordinance on public indecency. And definitely deeper just the discussion and dive into what the ordinance is on drug control in the city would be. So the, a few of the things on there, I'd like to see all the, all of our city personnel and our elected officials to have some sort of a in-depth training on cybersecurity since, you know, it's become more and more of a thing in our, in our time and especially as elected officials, we're targets for what they call whaling or very specifically targeting out social engineering against elected officials to try to get them compromised. Senior city officials like the city managers are also targets. So I think it's to have that extra training would be, and on a routine basis, would be, would be critical and important to make sure that we're aware and don't fall victim to any phishing or phishing scams. Another thing I'd like to really discuss is our dark fiber that we have in town. I think a competitive nature is extremely important, especially when it comes down to the broadband and internet services in, in Estacada. And one of the options we have on there is something that is called dark fiber. It's run by the, it's a fiber line that's run through the, down to 24 through the city and continues on out to 211 to Malala in that area. And it's controlled by the county and they provide services for other people when the contracts are made to have new companies come in and to offer competitiveness. And one of the things I'm really interested in looking at is what they did in Sandy and that is to provide a city-based internet service possibly. Because that allows, really allows us to focus on those who are lower income to have some programs for them, but also to, to allows us to, without, to have a competitive nature and offer other options to people in, in town for, for internet services. And it's also, I believe it's been a good source of revenue for other projects that the city of Sandy's had as well. And let's see, oh, the last thing is, I would like to see if the city can, can focus on some sort of program because the schools took out our, our, our stuff for like welding and other sort of trade training. That's a really big thing I hear in Estacada. A lot of our industrial areas and a lot of the jobs that people look at in this area are based on those trades. And so by the schools losing those, the training for those trades, we lost a trained workforce coming up within the city limits for people to be able to do those jobs as they get older. So that's, that's a chunk missing which can affect our vitality as an economic work provider in the area. So that's something that the city might be able to do to help bring those trades back around or offer programs through the city for, for youth to get training would be probably a really good way to kind of help provide a workforce going forward for people that like, you know, welding and so on. And I think that kind of covers all my big list I had there. So sorry for some.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to add to the goals here? I'm not seeing any hands. Oh, Paul?
Just a couple, one, I don't know if it's a goal, but hopefully we can just hit this one today. You know, along with partnerships, committee assignments. It'd be no, good to know what committees are open and we could just knock that out, I think, pretty quick and get people assigned to those.
Yeah, we're going to do that at the end.
Okay, great. And then a couple of other ones. I would like to have some sort of coordinated response to urge the opening of the highway up in, or upriver. Whatever we can do there to help the businesses here. I understand they're saying that it could be end of spring, early summer. But if we can do anything, I, we need to be advocating for our, our local businesses here. Even if it's something like open it partially. I talked to Luke over at Clackamas River Outfitters. He'd mentioned there's some talk about opening it on the weekends. It would be great to put in a voice for that echoing that. Other options would be partial openings. Can we get it up to some of the drop-in points for kayak and rafting as well too? Maybe we don't open it all the way to Detroit, but can we at least get it to? I mean, Indian Henry would be awesome, but more or, or I can't think of the other place. The two drop-in points that PGE has too. So if we can work on something like that, I think that'd be a good use of our time to advocate for our small businesses. And then circling back to what Bennett had talked about at our last meeting. It is intriguing to hear about the thoughts of a strategic plan. I'd like some, some discussion on that, just to get the thoughts and talk going on that as well too, to get a strategic plan in place. Those would be, those would be the things that I've got on my list.
Yeah, thank you, Paul. Anybody else want to add, Jerry?
I just want to make sure that I, I don't have anything new to add. I just want to make sure that the stuff that we did not accomplish last year does not get overlooked when we add these new goals. The, you know, because we, we had a reason for the stuff that we wanted to accomplish last year and I just want to see that stuff move forward and just make sure that we're paying attention to that and giving it, you know, giving it the attention that it deserves from us.
Okay, thank you, Jerry. Matt, I'll bring it back to you for a second.
Yeah, just quickly, Paul, I, I think you've probably seen in one of my communications, trying to keep the communications line open with ODOT and with Forest Service. I was wondering maybe Denise, and I guess Sadie, who's not on the call, perhaps an appropriate thing to do would be to invite the District Ranger as well as the ODOT manager of the debris and safety cleanup process to come to council, update you on what they're doing, what their timeline is. You can ask them questions and. uh and uh safety cleanup process to come to council, update you on what they're doing, what their timeline is. You can ask them questions and apply a little bit of that pressure that I feel you wanting to apply. I feel like your collective voices would be stronger than any email I can pin.
I like that, Matt. Thank you. That, that's a good idea. Um, Joel, do you want to add something in?
Uh, yeah, it is something that actually Paul brought to my mind um about helping with the businesses. As we know, because of the fire and the road closures, uh, if that doesn't get opened, um, even then, it's still going to be a limited uh tourist season this year, just because, you know, it's not as much green for people to see. Uh, so something that maybe we can look at getting on the, the goals is to for the city to try and uh maybe, like we have the Timber Fest, for example, something along the lines of where a large community event to try to attract people to come in and visit from a tourist per- uh perception, to bring them in, attract them into town. That would maybe like some sort of arts and crafts fair type of thing, or whatever it might be. I, I don't know exactly what that answer would be yet. But something that's gonna, more than we already do, just to track, be, put that extra effort into attracting people in during the uh tour season, so.
Okay, thank you, Joel. Matt, you're back up?
Uh, so we're having planning meetings with DEC, the Downtown Estacada Commission, parallel to this planning right now and we're evaluating events and deciding what to keep and what to introduce and some discussion right now uh to Councilor Litkey's point of maybe introducing another new event that is um unique and sufficiently unique to attract folks from outside the area. Uncorked is a great event, but it's not particularly unique. Uh, there's a gazillion wine and beer festivals throughout the state of Oregon and even in the Portland metro area. So one concept that's being tossed around, interested maybe in your initial reaction is to do and try and organize a soapbox derby that comes down the hill into downtown. Any thoughts on that?
I like that. I would join it.
Okay, I'll tell the DEC to keep running with that one and that you like it.
Okay. Great. Anybody else want to add anything into the goals before we move on?
Sorry, I don't, I don't know how to raise my hand on this tab that thing. Yeah, no, it's all good, sorry. So uh, I don't really necessarily have anything to add. I like everybody's input. Uh, the only thing that keeps coming to my mind is, and I think we talked about it when I first became a counselor, was just the riverfront and really getting it incorporated with everything. We haven't seen anything really built out like a dock or anything like that. So I just want to keep our mind on that as well, cause I think it's a good way to build tourism as well and take advantage of our our Estacada Lake that we have there, so.
I appreciate that, Justin. Thank you.
We are still working on that and Matt actually has a uh, makes a presentation fairly soon on getting a grant to keep that going, so.
Awesome.
Hoping that that, that happens here, yep.
Good, good.
We're permitting right now and, and, and then continuing to fundraise through twenty twenty-one. Uh, so the plans are, are moving, just never as quickly as we want.
Okay, thank you. Uh, any other to add? Uh, Charity?
Um, I, just a quick question with um, just keeping COVID in mind and I'm really, really wanting to attract more tourism into the area, especially since last year, um, the town, you know, suffered financially. I'm, I'm wondering as we're sharing these ideas, are we to just be optimistic and then just kind of just spitball ideas at you? Or are we trying to like frame it around a kind of COVID sort of situation?
No, I'd like to frame it in a normal situation, which I don't know what that ever is gonna be, but yeah, let's, let's pretend that COVID is gonna be gone and, and these are things we want to get done.
I love it. Perfect, okay.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Joel, one more time.
A, a big one I'd like to really put on uh, on our goals and hopefully in the short-term goals, is getting the city hall fully open again and getting the city council back in the chambers. Um, that's, that's been, that's important to me to make sure that that's on there. So as soon as we can, we're back there, so.
Uh, Katie?
Um, well, so when it comes to the COVID, Denise, do you think that because it's twenty twenty-one goals, council goals, um, do you think it would be appropriate for us to put on our goals some section about COVID? Uh, response or COVID relief or even just the aftermath of COVID when it is done? Um, do you think that it would be important for us to put some sort of COVID-related goal um as its own separate kind of uh, you know, like develop a vibrant downtown or whatever, have it be its own section? You're muted, Denise.
I thought I was muted and I put, um, yeah, we'll come up with something, some wording for that type of goal. Yep.
Okay. Yeah, I think that it would be important for us to put some sort of a COVID section, not only about how to, you know, deal with uh the restrictions now, and then of course, when everything is open, I feel like we're still going to have months of relief that we're looking at and whatever that relief looks like. That's, you know, not always money, but uh, um, definitely. And then, hey, Matt, while you're here, I have a question for you about the uh, um, what someone else was bringing up earlier about the Bennett Johnson suggestion about a strategic plan. Um, I have my own sort of concerns about what a strategic plan that normally a for-profit business would put together versus what a public entity could potentially put together. But uh, I want to know from you, what already exists when, with, I said, you know, strategic plan? What already exists in our city and what do you think would be beneficial to our city? Um, is, that is sort of like a strategic plan that you might need in addition to what already exists.
Um, tough question. Uh, I mean, this, the city's uh land use planning goals, I think, are in some ways a public entity strategic plan. They're not comprehensive. Um, in that, you know, they don't touch on certain topics, but those act as a guiding document. All of our planning documents act as, in some ways, a tr- strategic plan. Our transportation system plan, our active transportation plan, our parks master plan. Those are our guiding documents that have been adopted and blessed by councils uh that sort of provide that North Star. Um, certainly there are cities that have economic development strategic plans or citywide strategic plans that might look more like a business plan. I think that's what Bennett was suggesting. Do I have that right? I wasn't at the meeting.
Yeah, that was pretty much the consensus.
So, I mean, I guess I've told you what we already have in place as far as our adopted guiding documents. Do you want to go above and beyond that? I, your call.
Okay. Well, thank you for that. Um, Joel?
Um, I think uh, Matt, uh, at least a review of it, uh, you know, on a city council meeting or something. Um, so we can at least show the community that, you know, we're responding to what they're, what they're looking at, so they can be aware of what's there as well or have some sort of uh, community uh input or release to show them what their strategic plan is a little bit. And so that would might be a good way to go about it, so.
Paul?
Yeah, I, I think that's a good idea too. If, if we could at least get an idea of what we have in place, how that might compare. I know I went out and looked um, just to see what other cities might have a strategic plan. I didn't find many out there. What I found was more uh, uh, a city might have a strategic plan for their water department. They might have a strategic plan for their parks department. Things along those lines as opposed to an overriding strategic plan for the city. So it, it would be interesting to at least get together, talk it through. Um, kind of like Joel said, we'd at least be touching on something that the community brought up to us, and then we can make an informed decision from there as to where we'd like to go.
Thank you, Paul.
So, um, so kind of, I'm gonna kind of work into this next thing. I wanted, I wanted to give you an idea of the workshops that we were looking at doing, and I've added a couple ideas from discussion today. Um, I, our first workshop, which will be next Monday, it will be on council rules. Sadie has those ready to present to you, so you guys can review those. She has examples that she's put in from other cities that have been recommended to us. So I'd like to February eighth have that cause I think it's important to get those in place for the rest of the year. And then also at that time, or no, and then February twenty-second, I have a housing, talk about the CET and I'm gonna try to get Jill Smith there for a presentation to kind of go over all the types of housing, cause I don't understand it. And I think she will be able to come in and, and tell us. So, um, and that would probably also coincide with the appointment of the committee. So I think it's good timing to get that in there. Um, the third one might be, um, we have the the ordinances that Joel were talking about. We have the one ready for the indecent exposure. The drug use one, I think we really need to sit down and discuss what do we want in that, what do we want it to look like? So that would be one, and I'm not sure where that would fall. Then the emergency operation plan update is gonna take two workshops, and I'm hoping to get those in March. Have those, the two March meetings for that update. Um, I thought we could have the opening highway one where Matt said have, have the park service in, have um, ODOT in for the, to let us know what the, what is the timeline for opening, and we might be able to combine that with uh, a different one to get it in sooner. And then the last one I just did was plan updates, to sit down with the council with our five, well, we have more than five master plans, but we have five main master plans. And sit down and kind of go over those, because those are, um, they have a lot of information in them. We do updates that aren't really included in them. So we'll get those prepared and get those to you and kind of have Kurt there, Kurt, who does, you know, who is familiar with all of them to kind of go over those with everyone and answer questions that you might have. That is the guiding plans that the, that the um, staff uses for budgeting each year, which is what a strategic plan is all about. What do you budget for? Why did you do that budget? And that's another thing, council goals is really something I look at to see, what are we gonna budget for? This is what the council's priorities are. They come from these master plans that we have and that's kind of how we, we do our strategic planning, so.
Okay. Uh, Joel, did you have a question? I'm sorry.
Uh, yeah, sorry. Just a quick question for Denise on one thing, and then I have a, one more thing that, to question for, I guess. Uh, under the, the paperwork, I guess, you actually had three workshops planned for the EO, the EOP. Oh yeah, I just wasn't sure if that changed or not, if that's.
Three?
Yeah, so that's what it shows.
Yeah, I had put in there that we probably would need three, but there's a lot of, um, each chapter is kind of designated to either police or public works or fire. And so if they go through those, maybe we can work through it faster. Just kind of depends on how much you guys also want to delve into it, cause we don't want to, I don't want to skip through things. Um, something I've been kind of procrastinating on, cause other things keep coming up. And so we're like, well, we'll do that next, we'll do that next. So we need to do it. Um, but we could probably do two.
And the length of the workshop will depend on how busy your council meeting is on that same night.
Yeah.
If it's a short meeting like we had the other night, maybe we can do a little bit longer workshop too.
Gotcha, yeah. Cause I definitely know that the, the EOPs are, it's, well, it's like, what, four or five hundred pages?
Yeah.
A lot, a lot to look at in there, and I, I know it can be pretty daunting, but uh, based upon what just happened, I think it's something that we owe it to our to our citizens to really put a lot of work into that and show them that we want, we, we want to make sure we're fully prepared. And I think it also, it's a good idea to make that available to the public afterward on our website, easy for them to find. Um, the second thing I wanted to ask about is, how often do we have a uh, an in-depth review of our city ordinances? Basically looking at them, saying, do they apply currently? Are they contradicting to other ordinances? Do they make sense? Because I know sometimes you can have laws in the books that just don't make sense. And I wonder if we'd have like a, if we have something where we go through that like once every five years or something, just to make sure that things make sense.
Well, a few years ago, we went through most of them about, it was about three or four years ago to do just that to, where they were, um, they weren't put together very well. There were places that staff, of course, we use them more, so it's like, this doesn't seem to be in the right place. So we did a lot of changes three or four years ago. Staff really is looking at those all the time, trying to see how we can make those better. In fact, I just had a discussion with Sadie about some of the sections that don't refer to the fine for doing something. But if it doesn't refer to a fine, it automatically goes to the fine in chapter one and to make it better, so people can look at it know exactly what the consequences are for certain things. And um, and then of course, like the planning one, we, we redo pretty often the planning. The planning, especially parts of it that we find cumbersome as for either the applicant or the city, so. There, there isn't a specific timeline on those, but we do look at those often.
Maybe we can put that in.
Someone brings something up for, to look at.
Maybe we can put that in for a goal to set up some sort of like five or ten-year review schedule to look at X amount or certain parts of it per year, just to make sure that we're, we're, we're digging into it. We don't want to get into, you know, like IRS where you have an entire library for for IRS codes that probably don't even exist anymore. But something, you know, get the idea that we're just kind of keeping up and fresh and up to date on those. Make sure they, they apply with our current laws that change every year, you know, with everything's.
Yep.
That's good, Joel. Um, anybody else on this? No, everybody's comfortable? Okay.
Okay.
Uh, moving right along, uh, I'll just send it back over to you, Denise. You wanna?
I just want to, I, I have a couple more little things. So I sent out Katie's letter about um recalling uh asking for the resignation of the commissioner. I've heard from everyone but Paul and Charity, and I don't want to put you on the spot here. But if you could send me an email whether you want to sign that letter, or did you guys not see it?
I saw it. I saw it. When, when, when would you want that response by? I know we'd probably want it.
The letter sent out next week sometime if possible, so just.
Okay, I'll shoot, shoot for tomorrow.
You know, Charity, do you know what I'm talking about?
I know what you're talking about. Yeah, I just, I just looked at it. Um, I'll send you a response.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
And then, um, and then, oh, Joel?
All right, I have another question. Um, did you get my response to that as far as uh, I have concerns about putting it on City Letterhead?
I saw that, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Um, so then the, the, the next thing I have, if I can find my agenda. So um, we have the liaison. Hold on a second. Okay, here we go. So if you look at your um, schedule, that was the second page of your um packet, we have all the committees and commissions listed on the left side. So um, let me start with the Estacada Area Arts Commission. It's the first Wednesday at six thirty. Who wants to do that?
Jerry?
Or you want to stay on that?
I can't hear you, Jerry. Turn on your uh.
Yeah. If nobody else, if nobody else wants it, they're a great, they're, they are an amazing group of people. Um, if nobody else wants it, then I will definitely stay on, cause um, I do really enjoy them.
Um, uh, Justin, do you want to stay on the infrastructure and DEC?
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Um, how about Parks and Rav?
I'd like that one too. If I, if somebody else doesn't jump on it, I would really like that one though.
I was gonna say, um, Jerry, do, do you want to continue doing school board?
I don't.
Okay.
I, I don't.
I'll be interested in doing school board.
Well, that, that'll come up.
So, actually I have a meeting with the municipal technical tomorrow, so.
I was interested in parks, um, but uh, but you, I mean, Jerry can do it too. I'm gonna be very focused on housing.
Both of you, so Jerry and Katie on parks.
Sounds good.
Fine with that.
Planning commission.
I'll take that.
That, Joel?
Yep, I'll take that.
Okay. Library board.
Paul?
They meet the fourth Thursday at five thirty.
Paul's good on that.
And I haven't won, oh, is Paul gonna do it?
Yeah, he raises his hand.
I can't see hands, cause I have my screen with something else, so let me shout it out. Uh, we got DEC. Okay, the fire district, Katie?
Does someone else want it?
I would take fire district.
Sean? Okay.
Yes.
Uh, school, this, school district now, was it, who wanted to do that?
Me, Charity.
Charity and Joel raised their hand on that one, but.
Yeah. Uh, yeah, if Charity wants it, then that's fine. If not, uh, is it only one person, one counselor per?
Yeah, usually, cause they just bring back information regarding it.
Okay.
Should I put just Charity?
I, I just want to point out, um, so on the school board, um, being the liaison for the school board, you don't participate in the school board meeting. You sit in the audience and all you're doing is just basically relaying information back to us. And then you will have an opportunity, if you sign up for it, to speak at the school board meetings. If you, if there's something that council's doing that you want to um, you know, lia- basically give to them, so, um, but you don't actively participate in the school board meetings.
Okay.
I'm assuming that's for all, all commissions. We, we just, we're sitting there listening or?
Yeah.
Uh, some commissions, like the arts commission, I, I participate. I don't vote, but I, you know, I'm part of the discussion and, you know, stuff like that, so.
Yeah, really, all of the other committees though, um, we're not really supposed to take part in the discussion, cause we don't serve on that board. Um, we were literally just relaying information from one to the other, and sometimes uh, the commissions will have questions for And sometimes, uh, the commissions will have questions for a city representative. Can you find out this information or we need something from you? In that case, you know, it's nice having a city representative there so that the, you know, like the fire board every so often will say, hey, there is something that you as someone who represents the city might be able to help us achieve. Um, that's the most important thing about being a liaison, I think. Okay. And first, information gathering. Right.
So, so let me go over this list. So I have Jerry for the arts commission. Infrastructure and G, DEC is Justin. Parks and Rec is Jerry and Katie. Planning commission is Joel. Library board is Paul. Fire district is Sean. School district, charity. And community center. Oh, did we, how about community center?
I'll take community center if no one else wants it because I work with them a lot anyways. So.
Perfect. Okay. Got it.
Okay. Oh, we, we already talked about C4 the other day. So.
Right.
I'm still on C4. Katie's a backup on C4. And then, um, uh, of course I have my, uh, managers and mayor city meeting between you, myself and the county. So that's, that's the thing.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Katie.
Um, we also, I was wa- wanting to assign a liaison today for the Chad committee as well as the DEIC because those are two committees that are going to be, um, up and running in the next couple of weeks. And I'd really like to have a liaison already assigned to them. Um, I will take Chad.
Yeah. How about the DEIC? Who would like to do that?
I think Jerry's in on that one.
Jerry, what do you?
I, I'd like that one. Yeah. Um, so the other, the other thing that, um, I, I'd like that for us to discuss. We don't have to make a decision tonight. I mean, um, Katie brought up a good point with, uh, creating a relationship, a better communication relationship with the, um, Clackamas County Commission. Um, I think that, you know, maybe we should have somebody that is assigned to, um, I can't make all those meetings. I can't watch them all. Um, if, uh, if we had, if we could start a discussion on, you know, maybe having a liaison to the Clackamas County Commissions, you know, commissioners. That would be, I think that would be great.
Maybe what I can do is get on, find out when regular meetings are. And it may be not the same person every time, but I can throw it out to you guys. Hey, who's available to watch this, especially now that they're Zoom? You know, you could even watch it later if you didn't make it, you know, but, and then report back on what they are working on. That's a good idea, Jerry.
Question. I have a question.
Charity?
Is there, um, and maybe this is a silly question, but is there a liaison for, um, uh, Clackamas County Sheriff's Office?
Um, yeah, I, there, we have, uh, my, uh, meetings every two months with, uh, they have a meeting with the sheriff, um, and undersheriff. And then the three chiefs and the three cities that are contract cities, the contract cities meet. And I attend all of those.
Okay. Is that something that, um, a council member could attend as well or?
I, I think it's more of a staff thing, but I can talk to him about that, the.
Okay.
Or her, the sheriff now. So.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, there's never been anyone there other than those contract city thing people.
Okay, cool.
Uh, Joel?
We ever thought about writing in like a police commissioner, uh, type of, uh, uh, position into the, uh, city charter for like, uh, either the mayor or a city council member, someone to take position on? So that way it could be a direct liaison with our contract, um, through the county. Uh, a police commissioner basically is the person that was, you know, primarily in charge of the police services under, underneath, above the chief, but we, in this case, could act more as a liaison on a contract level. So.
Yeah. I, like I said, I'll talk to them about a council liaison and maybe, um, some other meeting type thing that can be set up.
Okay. Good. All right. Any other hands going up, uh, in reference to this liaison, uh, part of this, uh, discussion? Nothing?
I, I'm sorry. I got one more question there.
Okay, oh.
Uh, as I mentioned earlier about wanting to partner with, uh, and make sure that we're interacting with some of the key, uh, nonprofits in the area. Um, is that something that we'd want to have someone that reaches out to them? Um, goes to their quarterly meetings or whatever, or talks to them, especially the key ones like Yellow House, Food Bank, things like that. Those, those are the ones that are, have a core service to a lot of people in our community, especially that are, that are economically, uh, challenged. Um, so would that be something to the city? Can understand how we can better work with them to send someone that works with them on a normal basis?
Yeah, let, let, why don't we have staff pull together some of those and get a list to you guys? And then we can discuss that and see which ones we want to, I don't want to say target because that's like your, but which ones do we want to, uh?
With?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, that sounds good. That sounds good. Okay. Any other discussion on those? Uh, Melanie?
Yeah, just a comment on that. Um, um, Sadie is on the board at the food bank, just as a volunteer. And I think that is, ma- maybe Denise can share more of this, but we recently, you can make a donation to the food bank now on your water bill. It used to just be the community center. Now I think you can do it to the food bank also. And I think that was something that came about because Sadie was more aware of what was going on, what the work that was being done at the food bank, or maybe I'm getting that mixed up Denise, you know?
That's true. That's, yeah. The community foundation is the other one that does it, not the community center.
Oh, right. To the community foundation. Right. Correct. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else? All right.
That's all I have. I think I have all my notes that I wanted to bring up.
Okay.
Paul had given me.
Okay, we're about 15 minutes early here to determine. Katie, you have something else?
Sorry, I, I didn't realize that we were just going to adjourn right after the liaison thing. I was actually really hoping that we could touch base really quickly on the front office updates, um, uh, that we didn't really get a, an opportunity to discuss earlier. Um, when it really, when it comes to the, um, the building permits that were issued, I think I already know the answer, but I want to just clarify, who gives out certificates of occupancy?
The bill, the, the people, the contract that we build with the building department down in Eugene.
Okay. So they're the ones that issue out certificates of occupancy. Is it possible, um, and I really do appreciate the updates that you guys have been giving us, um, when it comes to how many building permits are issued every year? I would really love to start seeing, um, the certificate of occupancies that are being issued at a certain given time as well. Because while the, um, the, the permits or the building permits, it's a really great metric for us to use to know what growth is coming. Um, I think that the certificate of occupancy is a lot more accurate of a number to tell us about the growth that we already experienced. Um, or, and, and that is a, a number that I would really love to start seeing is not just number of building permits, but also the number of certificates of occupancy. Um, and, uh, I guess that was my really big one that I was really hoping that this year as we start moving forward. And I want to just say Denise, when it comes to the, um, the variance reports that you've been giving us during the quarterly budget updates, I really have been appreciating them. Um, just, you know, with the, the staff memo of this is why the number might look weird. This is why the, um, you know, it really does help me not have those questions. So that when I get the, the variance report, um, and I'm sorry if you call it a different thing. I call them variance reports in my industry. So, um, but when I get the variance report, it's, it's really nice because I don't have those questions for you. I don't feel like I have to ask, you know, major questions during a meeting or call you up before the meeting and ask you them because you've answered them all right there. So I really do appreciate that and I'm, uh, I look forward to those continued reports. Um, and I'm sorry if me asking for more reports is going to be more work, but I really do think that the certificate of occupancy is going to help us paint a really good picture as to how much actual growth we went through. Just because I know that for every building permit that's issued, those are good for two years. So it doesn't necessarily mean that all 130, uh, homes that were, that received those building permits last year, that all of them got built last year. I think that it would be really important for us to start following though, how many homes are actually getting completed and how quickly those are getting completed as well. So, thank you very much.
Very easy to add that.
All right, great. All right, people, we are at that time. If there's anything else, uh, Melanie, go ahead.
I just want to say, uh, just a little announcement and a little plug for tomorrow night for the DEI training. I'm really looking forward to it. I know by six o'clock in the evening, I'm really looking forward to not using my brain much anymore. Um, but I, Cliff Jones is going to, when we, Taylor and I have been meeting with him to make plans for the, um, for these trainings and he is, he's really great to talk with. And he just has a way of looking at things, um, that catches me off guard sometimes and helps me learn and look from a different perspective. And I think, um, it feels good to, to grow in that way, you know? And to feel like, hey, I'm, I'm not just thinking about me. I'm, I'm trying to look at things. Um, that's going to be beneficial to our community and that's going to help me grow as a person. And that, that with all of us learning and kind of being able to bounce ideas off each other and how we look at things. Um, anyway, I'm just, I think it's going to be great. And so we'll be sending out the Zoom link tomorrow. Um, there's just going to, it'll just be you guys and then, um, staff and then a couple of people from, we invited some committees, but not a lot of people could make it. Um, so it'll be, um, a good training and I, it's like a training, but also just a learning opportunity, I think. And, um, so anyway, we'll send you that Zoom link and I think it'll be well worth our time. So.
Good. Thank you, Melanie.
I'm forward to it.
All right. Anybody else? Once, twice, three times? Okay. I want to thank you all tonight. Your input was invaluable. And it was great to see all of you speak up. I mean, it's very seldom that I, I get everybody on the council giving their opinion or their preference or the ideas of the future. This is what makes this job what I call the best part of it. Because now I'm seeing you're all involved, you're all engaged, you're all asking the questions, you're all finding the answer. That to me is incredible. So I want to thank you all for that and making the time to do that. I also want to thank, thank staff for being there for us and explaining, going through this process. A lot of us, I mean, I learn more in this short amount of time, believe it or not, every year, uh, about things that I had no clue. So I want to thank you for everything that you do, the information that you bring forward. You're invaluable to us. So thank you. And in that, I'm going to adjourn this meeting. So thank you.